Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October 29, 2024 Regular Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with almost all council members present. Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen shall be joining us momentarily. So with that, I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have an agenda. So our first item this evening is item 2A, which is Special Recognition for the Mayor for the Day Essay Contest Winner. And this is something that is of my creation. I thought it was important to have a program that really sort of called and spoke to our youth about the role, duties, and responsibilities of the mayor for the city of Olympia. And you know, there is many adults that don't quite understand what the roles, duties, and responsibilities of the mayor is of the city. And so I thought, why not catch them early and talk to our young 4th, 5th, and 6th graders in the community and start to explain to them, you know, what these responsibilities are and how they're unique and specific to the city of Olympia and how they're different from other cities. And also, I thought, you know, we were doing our work with the inaugural Youth Council, which we'll also be recognizing tonight as well. And I thought this was a good program to sort of complement that work as well. So I have selected Coral Thorpe, who is a 6th grader at Olympia Regional Learning Academy, as the essay contest winner. And Coral, if you will approach the podium and share a few words about your selection as the mayor for the day.
Hi, I'm Coral Thorpe, and I have my essay here, which is Ways to Make a Better Community. And I have, "We could help out the homeless shelter by making more places for them to go and more buildings so they would have a place to sleep. And I would help by setting up tents for them and helping the elders move from place to place. And I would also ask to fix abandoned buildings so they would have more space. And also supporting the LGBTQ+ community by putting up flags and using the right pronouns and treating them the same. And also supporting Black Lives Matter by also treating them the same. And I think I should be mayor for the day because it makes me sad to see all the people not treated fairly. And I would also love to help out by making them feel included and have a better environment."
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. So you're making city history because you are the very first mayor for the day at the city of Olympia. So congratulations to you. So, parents, would you like to share a few words?
Well, I would just like to thank Mayor--
You got to approach the podium so we can, so everyone can hear you who's watching at home.
Okay, thank you. I guess just real briefly, we'd like to thank you, Mayor Payne, for offering youth in the community the opportunity to share their thoughts and to engage in local government. And thank you to Susan for helping make this a positive experience for Coral. And we'd like to thank the Orla teachers and principal for creating a school environment that helps the kids think about these types of issues and have the courage and confidence to engage in this type of opportunity. And of course, we're incredibly proud of Coral. So, thank you.
So I'm going to do something a little unconventional here. So normally, the council comes to you in the front of the dais. But, Madam Mayor, if you would indulge me and come back here and join me with your family as well. So, family, come on up. So I'm presenting her with the City of Olympia lapel pin, which is also on my jacket here. So here is the pin for you. And you also have your very own gavel.
Oh. Thank you.
Yeah, can we move the seat up a little bit? And if you want to take some time to put the pin on, do you need help with that?
There you go. Okay.
Oh, go ahead and--
Usually I make people talk about cheese, so this is--
Shouldn't you use devils?
Absolutely. Yes.
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 Yes. Would you take a picture with the full council? I was just going to ask.
Should we come--
Should we sit here or should we come closer?
Yes, come closer.
You guys have to get closer.
Stay in. It's kind of forward.
All right. Dad, come on this side. This side.
All right. You're all set.
Congratulations. So, we're not quite done. So there will be a future day where we will also kind of formally swear in Coral as the mayor for the day, and she will spend a day shadowing me with four activities. And then we will see what kinds of questions you have, and I hope you have a lot because I'm prepared to answer a lot of questions. And I just want to offer that your essay is one of feeling, and that's one that came through. And the Mayor Pro Tem and I had that discussion as well about your essay, and that was very clear that that's what came through. And that was very important because I think there's heart in the work that we do here at the city. And so we just thank you for really just kind of intuitively tapping into that as a 6th grader. So congratulations again, and I'll see you soon. Okay, so that takes us to our next business item this evening, which is Special Recognition, which is the appointment of the inaugural City of Olympia Youth Council. And here to present this evening is Susan Grisham, the Assistant to the City Manager. Hi, Susan.
Good evening, council members. It's so exciting to be here and to the first part of this meeting being a celebration of youth leaders in our community. So it's really exciting to be at this point where we are talking about appointing the first Olympia Youth Council. So first, I'm going to do just a little overview of where we've been. So first, in June of 2022, our Mayor Pro Tem, with the support of council members Parsley and Madron, put forward a referral requesting the hiring of a consultant task with researching and engaging, or researching successful youth council models and best practices and engaging and consulting with Olympia youth and providing a recommendation to Olympia City Council on how to best stand up an Olympia Youth Council. So that summer, the city launched an RFP to select a firm to develop a recommendation. The contract was awarded to True Clusion, which used a human-centered, inclusive approach to help guide the development of recommendations that would create a diverse, equitable, and inclusive youth council. An Olympia Youth Council will increase the sense of belonging and value of the youth in our community as they contribute to the city and decision-making in a meaningful manner. Throughout 2023, True Clusion engaged with Olympia youth, reaching across cultural, social, and economic identities. The focus of these areas increased diverse participation and captured stakeholders' unique perspective in the formulation of recommendations for the Olympia Youth Council. The youth that have been participating have been referred to as youth advisors. And in conjunction with Olympia community engagement through True Clusion, also there was study of best practices of successful youth councils across the country, which also informed the recommendations. In October of 2023, the city council approved the research and recommendations report for standing up the Olympia Youth Council. And since that time, the youth advisors have continued meaning to develop their standard operating procedures, including mission, purpose, and vision statements, community norms, subcommittees, and leadership positions. So now I will just talk a bit about the recruitment process. So on July 27, the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee approved the recruitment and seating plan for the Youth Council, which included a recruitment engagement and engagement event, appointing the current youth advisors that would like to continue to the full city council, to the full Youth Council. And, pardon me, and then the current youth advisors and the Mayor Pro Tem reviewed the applications and moved forward young people for interviews. The applicants were interviewed by the Mayor Pro Tem and a panel of youth advisors, and they also suggested the interview questions. The application for youth council members was opened from August 14 through September 11. An recruitment event was held on August 17 at Percival Landing Park. In total, six applications were received, and all applicants were moved forward to be interviewed. Five applicants were interviewed, as one did not respond to interview scheduling communications. On October 7, a panel consisting of Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen and youth advisors Shruti Lingam Natamai, Allison Walker, and Willow Chen interviewed five applicants for the Youth Council. So now, moving on to the appointment recommendations. All five youth that were interviewed are recommended for appointment: Forshaana Horbach, Damari Joseph, Iman Harun, Stella Artemis, and Kalen Velasquez. These youth range in age from 14 to 17 years old, attend Capital Olympia Avanti, SPSC, Running Start, and one student from Tomarter High School. And while this is the Olympia Youth Council, like our current boards and commissions, folks who do not live within city limits can also serve. The five young people represent different cultural, social, and economic group identities, have strong volunteerism and community leadership, and each are interested in making the community a better place by engaging in issues of social justice, mental health, diplomacy, and much more. At the July 27, 2024 Community Livability and Public Safety Committee meeting, the committee agreed that the youth advisors who had been serving along and would like to continue would be also moved forward for appointment. So on October 27, the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee approved these recommendations for appointment. So while this is a special recognition, you can actually do the approval. We do have approval on the consent calendar. Since this is such a long meeting, we wanted to make sure that the youth can get home at a reasonable time. So tonight, there will be approval of the appointments on the consent calendar. And then we begin onboarding November 6, 13, and 20 here in council chambers. And then on January 15 of 2025, after almost two years of working on this project, we will be having the very first Olympia Youth Council meeting. So I wanted to, before we move on, first, I wanted to acknowledge that there are some of those young people sitting in this audience tonight, and I'm really grateful for them to be here. And I also want to give heartfelt and hearty thank you to True Clusion, in particular Yan Folino, Dr. Ashley Gardner, and Dane Wolfram. They have provided guidance, support, and deep expertise in working with underrepresented communities, in particular, young people who are finding their voice in our community. And a very special thank you to the some 60 young people who have contributed to this process along the way. It's been an incredibly engaging and exciting process to learn more about the youth in our community and really understand how they want to make our community a better place. So tonight is pretty momentous, and I'm really excited to say that we are at this point. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you so much, Susan, and both for your assistance with the Mayor for the Day program and also your extensive work for supporting the Youth Council and getting here tonight. So can we give a round of applause for Susan Grisham, who's done an incredible amount of work?
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen.
This is happening! This is so exciting. Well, it's not formally happening until the consent calendar. And we would not usually do this, but we're feeling sure, I think. So I'm not going to take up too much time. I'm so excited. And this, just, we could not have been in this place. Susan gave a really, really great sort of nutshell overview of everything that we've been through to come to this point tonight. And there were so many different hands that touched this process, different fields of work, certainly young people. That was prioritized. So there was a whole process to even get the youth advisors, not yet youth council members, but youth advisors, to help us build, what should the Youth Council be? What should it not be? What is a good process in order to select folks? All throughout the way, we really, really centered and prioritized youth voice. You know, I mean, sometimes folks that did not identify as youth had differing views, but we went with the youth voice, and it paid off every time, truly. It is, it is so lovely that we have, you saw in one of the last slides, that we're, tonight we'll be voting to appoint five. But we had, what was it, was it 11? 12 or 11?
Yeah, it's 16 total. So you'll be appointing both the folks who interviewed and were moving forward, and also the youth advisors who are moving forward. So 11 youth advisors and five applicants.
Thank you. That's amazing. So we have young people that have been helping inform this process all the way through, right? It's been, it has been some time now, and for them to decide, hey, I'd actually like to come back and be a part of this, I think that's really a testament to not only the process, but their experiences so far with the city of Olympia governing, government and our staff, and how much they believe in this work, of course. I mean, I think that that deserves some lifting up as well. We were really excited as council and our small committee of Community Livability and Public Safety that has been, has been sort of reviewing this Youth Council process. But, you know, we were actually really surprised. Well, I mean, can we just appoint them all? I don't know. You know, what's the process for that? But at the end of the day, if we have young people that are already involved, that know what it's about, and that want to help kind of shepherd the process as we seat the first, the inaugural Youth Council, how exciting and how blessed are we? I, yeah, I just, I'm so excited. I see a lot of great faces and their loved ones with them. And we really, truly couldn't have done it if it wasn't for all of the folks that touched this work from our, from our city staff to council members. Even saying, yes, we should work on this. We don't go rogue on the council. You know, we really can't. And so everything we do, there's sort of special emphasis from certain council members, for whatever reasons. It could be committees or passionaries. But we do everything we do together. And so, again, the blessing of the full council and then our contractors and then all of the young people involved, and the adults in their life that are, that are helping support this. So I guess I'll kind of keep it there. I'm so excited for this. We will be taking a picture. I'll kick it back to you, Susan.
I am done unless there are any more comments.
Yes, any additional comments from the dais? Councilmember Parsley.
Besides thanking True Clusion and Susan, I want to thank the Mayor Pro Tem for being such a good champion. Because there were times with budget and concerns about what we were going to keep in and what we weren't. It was your voice that kept us going on the right path, and so I appreciate that. And to the youth, if you doubt your power, go look at the inheritance resolution that we passed just before the pandemic, which was crafted by three high school students and negotiated with the Mayor Pro Tem, myself, and Rich Hoy, then the Public Works Director. And we didn't, we tried to get concessions, and we had to give away every single time. So that resolution was written by, and eventually passed by council, but it was written by high school students. So the youth have power, and remember that. And your voice has power in our community because you are the future, and we are working towards your future. And thank you again, Mayor Pro Tem.
Any additional comments? Councilmember Cooper.
My microphone is doing that thing. Okay. Thank you, Susan. This has been a lot of work, Mayor Pro Tem as well. It's been a lot of conversation for a long time in our city about how do we more meaningfully engage youth in the future and have them lead, right? Because they know more than us in a lot, a lot of circumstances. Just, I mean, if I could have boiled so many different policy conversations just down to what Coral said in her letter as an example, they would have been a lot easier because you boiled it down to the core. And that's, I think, what kids are so great, young people are so great at. And I have a lot, quite a lengthy previous career working in the youth leadership field. And in fact, my, my first public service was as, as the city council representative, or as a youth representative to my city council in high school. And I want to just pass on one piece of wisdom to everyone that's involved in the future of this program is, treat the youth like you think you should the adults, and treat the adults like you think you should the youth, and you'll be right every time. And I am dead serious. It's not even a joke. So kids are, are the adults of the future, and we need to learn more from you. So thank you for stepping up, and hopefully you'll help us see the way.
Well said. Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I really just want to thank you all for your service and your commitment to the city. We make so many important decisions that impact your future, and you can't even vote for us. Like, you will be able to someday, but like, you know, until you reach the age of 18, you can't even vote for the people who are deciding your future. So this is another way for you to be engaged and help us make better decisions so that your generation and future generations are going to be better off. So thank you very much.
Any additional comments? Congratulations. I think that it's really critical that we have a Youth Council for all of the reasons that we just heard. But more importantly, I think that you have an advisory role that we are very much looking forward to you utilizing and putting to work. I think that, I see this as an extension of the city's equity work, in the sense that the youth voice has, is not something that we've captured historically as a city. And so we are turning a page, and we are looking to you for your advice. There's nothing like people making decisions for you without you. And so it's so important that, that we now will benefit from your leadership and your willingness to step up and, and lead as young leaders in our community. And I have no doubt that some of you someday will probably be seated back here and, and other places in government in Washington State. And so, again, congratulations, and we'd like to invite all of you up for a photo, and then we'll have your parents join us, and we'll take another photo with your parents. How's that sound? All right, so come on up.
And he people--
Who's that in line?
Okay, thank you so much.
Who's that in line?
And we had our--
Okay.
Oh, I see, I see everybody.
All right, thanks so much. And I guess the parents are coming up.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Come on up.
All right, parents.
Parents, family.
Daddy, we're pretty sure we're living in here.
Family, all family, friends.
This is a family picture.
Did you get the phone to--
Oh, yes.
Susan.
Yes.
Okay, everybody looking for the writing person.
Susan.
Yes.
Okay, everyone.
Okay.
All versions, yes.
All right.
All right, so we got, I have a whole bunch of other ones.
No, no, no.
Far away there.
Okay, there you go.
Small yawn bird.
There you go.
Two more, two more.
Two more, two more?
Oh, okay.
It's not even your phone!
I'm in there right now.
Okay, oh, this is a really close one.
I don't want to mess with your setting.
I can't tell if it is out of focus because I'm not--
I have one more.
Okay.
And one, oh, there we go.
Okay.
I'll send those phones right there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hi, how are you?
Yes, I recognize you.
I feel like we still have--
I, you know--
All right.
And as Susan mentioned in her presentation on this item earlier, the consent calendar is officially where we will approve the inaugural body of the Olympia Youth Council. So at this time, those who are here for the Youth Council, you are free to go or you are free to stay if you want to hear the official vote on the consent calendar. It shouldn't take too long, but it will be an additional at least 15 minutes or so. We have one person for public comment this evening. So--
There's no--
Sure. Mayor Pro Tem.
No need to feel bashful. There's no obligation to stay. You can if you want to. It is a public meeting. You can come every week if you want, but feel free to, feel free to filter out if you'd like to and enjoy your evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So with that, that concludes Special Recognition, and now we will move on to public comment. I believe we have one person signed in in person in chambers this evening. So we will go ahead and get started. There is a clock to my right, your left on the wall, indicating that you have two minutes of time for your comments. There is a box on the podium here with green, yellow, and red lights indicating that your time has begun. When the green light is lit, the yellow light indicating you have 30 seconds remaining in your comments, and the red light indicating--
All right, parents.
Parents, family.
We're getting dad and group's representatives in here.
Siblings, all family, friends.
You think you have a phone to tell people?
Oh, yes.
Yes. Okay, everybody looking for the writing version on Susan. Yes. Okay, everyone. Okay. All versions, yes. All right. All right, so we got, I have a whole bunch of other ones. Far away there. Okay, there you go. Small yawn bird. There you go. All right.
Two more, two more.
Two more, two more? Oh, okay. It's not even your phone! Okay, oh, this is a really close one. I don't want to mess with your settings. I can't tell if it is out of focus because I'm not. One more. And one, oh, there we go. Okay.
Yep.
We're doing the honors.
We are.
Congratulations.
Yes, I recognize.
I, you know.
All right. And as Susan mentioned in her presentation on this item earlier, the consent calendar is officially where we will approve the inaugural body of the Olympia Youth Council. So at this time, those who are here for the youth council, you are free to go or you are free to stay if you want to hear the official vote on the consent calendar. Shouldn't take too long, but it will be an additional at least 15 minutes or so. We have one person for public comment this evening. So. Sure. Mayor Protam.
No need to feel bashful. There's no obligation to stay. You can if you want to. It is a public meeting. You can come every week if you want, but feel free to filter out if you'd like to and enjoy your evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. So with that, that concludes special recognition and now we will move on to public comment. I believe we have one person signed in in person in chambers this evening. So we will go ahead and get started. There is a clock to my right, your left on the wall indicating that you have two minutes of time for your comments. There is a box on the podium here with green, yellow, and red lights indicating that your time has begun. When the green light is lit, the yellow light indicating you have 30 seconds remaining in your comments and the red light indicating that your time has expired. If you do not finish your comments, feel free to email them to the council. And please refrain from expressing your support or opposition for a candidate or ballot measure at the federal, state, or local level of government this evening. So with that, I would like to call forward Rita Robinson.
Hello. My name is Rita Robinson. I live in Tumwater and I'm here to talk about the process that the city recently had for choosing new names for three public facilities, two parks, and the armory. I appreciate being able to participate in the process, but I thought the process was weak for the following reasons. The website set up for people to make nominations was confusing to use. You needed to create an account and some people said they couldn't figure out how to nominate someone or how to vote. No handouts were provided at the public hearing on nominations. When I asked about handouts, I was referred to the agenda. However, I wasn't able to find the documents referenced on the agenda on the advisory committee website nor on the City Parks Department website. No list was provided read or shown in the screen of who was nominated. No report was given on the number of people who voted for each nomination. No report was given on the number of people who emailed support for the nominations. The advisory committee decided to name the Kaiser Woods Park after an individual who was not nominated. I didn't see any indication in the process that the advisory committee would be making additional nominations. So please, when you get these recommendations before you, let the public know what the process is going to be. Will you be having a public hearing? Will you be saying yes or no to the people, to the nominations that have already been nominated? Will new nominations be allowed? Will you be making nominations yourself? So maybe the problem in the process was the term nominations. Maybe a better term would have been to use the term suggestions rather than nominations.
Thank you very much for your comments and I don't see our Parks Director here, but if we can get a response, that will be great.
Yeah, I'll work with Paul and we'll get a response back to you on this.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager. Okay, so that concludes public comment for this evening and we will move on to the adoption of the consent calendar. But before adoption, I am tracking that we have two pools. The first is for E, an approval to appoint Troy Kirby to the Capital Area Regional Public Facilities Board is to be pulled for separate action. And I am also tracking a pool at the request of the City Manager for the approval of an ordinance amending Olympia Municipal Code related to vehicle camping and amending OMC Chapter 10.16 by addition of a new section and amending OMC Sections 10.16030, 10.20090, and 16.06.20. So. Oh, and that is item 4L, as in Lima. Okay, thank you. And so with that, I need a motion to approve this evening's consent calendar minus items for E and for L. Or, excuse me, just for E and withdraw motion. I need a motion to approve this evening's consent calendar minus 4E.
Submit.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the consent calendar minus, yes?
If I may.
Sure.
Is there an opportunity for discussion on this motion before we vote?
Sure.
Because 4L has a wording, some wording that was problematic for me. It's a small thing, but in our describing the kinds of vehicles people can be in, it says a semi-trailer. And I believe that the term they're looking for is a Conex or a shipping container and not a semi-trailer. So a small thing, but I would appreciate that language clarification while we're updating the ordinance.
Can you do an amendment then?
And didn't you say the City Manager had comments on that one?
Yes.
So we should probably.
By request of the City Manager to provide a brief as to what this ordinance is. So this is a policy that we have as a city that we are officially putting into ordinance. And so they're going to provide a brief presentation on what that is. So we can either have that presentation first. Okay. All right, so at this time, I'd like to discuss agenda item for approval to appoint Troy Kirby to the Capital Area Regional Public Facilities Board. Mayor Protam, win.
Oh, yeah, I was interested in pulling this for separate action. I understand that board positions on this board do not come up very often. I think that as referenced in the staff report, I think there could be improvements in the process and that would yield to, I believe, a strengthened candidate pool.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I also agree with those sentiments. You know, it's a reasonable body that impacts all of us and I want to see a stronger process in the future on this and just knowing that there were three applicants, but there's one that's been chosen and we only get to see that one, to vote on that one. And frankly, when I read the application, I just, there's a lot, there's much to be desired. It's very brief, doesn't quite answer the questions that are in there and I'm not, I just don't find it very compelling. So I just would appreciate a better process around this.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Partially.
Can I just have a clarification on how this process came about and who's in charge?
Thank you. So, great question. So as was noted, these appointments don't come around very often. So your PFD Board, your Public Facilities District Board, is a board that meets once a year. It has each city represented and the county has its own rep and then there are three regional reps that are appointed. The regional reps should come before all the bodies, but there's not really been a great process because they don't come up very often. In this case, you have regional reps that represent, they're not assigned to those cities, but you have regional reps, one person from Olympia, one person from Tumwater. In this instance, Lacey was hoping for a regional rep that represents kind of the broader Lacey area. So they brought a recommendation to us for this process. As I talked with all of you, I shared this kind of confusion with the City Manager of Lacey. They explained that they've kind of run this process. They recognize that improvements can be made to this process in the future and have committed to that, but they would still like to move forward with this recommendation this evening. So the City of Lacey Council has voted to approve it and are asking us to do the same. And again, I think we have a commitment from Lacey and Tumwater and ourselves as well in the future to have a more robust process so these things don't surprise any of us.
Councilmember Gilman.
So I'd just like to ask my colleagues, I wasn't clear if you were speaking against this motion or if you were in support of this motion but want to see something different in the future.
Mayor Protam, win.
Thank you for that. For the reasons that I stated, I will be voting nay for this one.
Okay. So we will go ahead and after we have Darian come forward, we will have a motion to adopt the consent calendar minus 4E and possibly 4L for separate action. So. All right. Darian Lightfoot, the Director of Housing and Homelessness Response for the city, is here to speak to item 4L.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much. Darian Lightfoot, Director of Housing and Homeless Response. I'm here to talk about the ordinance update 4L, that's before you this evening, with an amendment that you all received in an email. Sorry about the late adjustment this morning. But this ordinance change is to address some of the tension or the public comment that you all have seen at council over the past handful of months regarding RVs, which now has been broadened to live aboard. Before, it was an RV ordinance that was really addressing people having an RV and living in the RV around the state, around the right-of-way. And now we're seeing people live in just a car. And so we've broadened that definition to be a live aboard or people living in a vehicle. Prior, the city had a policy that we were using outside of the ordinance that was really trying to follow our homeless response principles of moving people into housing instead of policing homelessness. And we've been really workshopping that over the past year in partnership with Homeless Response, Parking Services, NOPD. And now this is really actualizing that policy. And so what you'll see before you tonight is the ordinance change, it's our communication plan, it's our workflow, and it's moving forward how we're going to be addressing live aboard. And I'm here with Tim Smith to talk more about the penalty or how we're going to be enforcing. But what I really want to emphasize is that with live aboard is going to be remaining in homeless response for as long as we can. We're going to be working with people, getting them in coordinated entry, trying to get them out of living in their vehicle and either into a tiny home village or permanent housing. And it will remain the case or the situation or the person needing assistance will remain with homeless response for as long as we can. And then once it is passed over to Parking Services, that's when the enforcement will begin. And you'll see that in the policy. It's three tickets in a calendar year, then the vehicle is subject to tow. And then once it's subject to tow, that's when it'll be handed off to OPD. So I can talk more about homeless response and how we're going to be engaging with folks and Tim can speak more on the enforcement Parking Services element too, if you'd like.
Thank you very much, Darian. Any questions from today? Councilmember Partially followed by Councilmember Gilman.
One, thank you for explaining that, you know, they'll stay with services until, you know, that has not necessarily succeeded. It's the best way to put that. But I've heard from local businesses and some community members that when they call about a vehicle that is staying too long and garbage is on the sidewalk, there is some confusion from our own staff whether it should be the parking or police. And I've gotten some pretty sharp words from some business owners about that. So as we, we have an opportunity here when we pass this on consent to recommunicate not only with our community but potentially with our staff to make sure that we have a clear chain once it moves out of the homelessness response team.
Yeah, and I totally see why that there was some misunderstanding there and we have really tightened that up. So we understand the clean passoff from one department to another. We're tracking all of the touches in our internal Q Alert system to know when people have been connected with, excuse me. And, yeah, I could see why businesses would have that response, but it's cleaner and clearer now. We have also differentiated the financial amount for the ticket and if someone is identified to be living in their vehicle, then we've reduced that financial amount down to zero. If it's someone who is parking their RV because it's storage in the right-of-way or someone who is just kind of hanging out in town for a couple nights but has an alternative permanent residence, that's when that ticket with a monetary association would be assigned. But if it's someone residing in their vehicle or live aboard because they have nowhere else to go, the three ticket and then a tow will stay there, but there's no financial amount associated with the ticket. And so, yes, once it's passed over to Parking Services, the three tickets in the calendar year, then over to OPD to help address those concerns.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Councilmember Gilman.
Good. I very much appreciate these process improvements of clarifying which department interacts at what point along the line. I think that's going to be helpful. What I didn't see, and I'm not sure what our limits are, is a lot of the frustration up around Berry Park was about after a city staff has an interaction, the person leaves for hours or an overnight and then returns. And our ordinance still says, technically says so long as you leave for 24 hours, but the reality is we have brief interactions as city staff. So tell me, how does this change having, how do you actually in real life work on people who agree to drive away when the city staff interact with them or agree to drive away when there's three RVs parked head to toe, but then return to that arrangement the next morning?
Yes, that is correct. This isn't necessarily addressing people living in their vehicles and what's happening outside of enforcement or outreach hours. What we're trying to address is to not let another encampment grow. That's what we feel is the strategy around this policy or ordinance. And we feel like we can address the growth or the permanency of an encampment with people living in their vehicles. In terms of people leaving and coming back or moving after 24 hours, that is a strategy in not letting the encampment grow. And so we understand that there are impacts in that. We understand people will drive around the corner, park a few feet away and come back. But we see that as addressing the issue of not allowing an encampment grow. And so there's still going to be impacts in parks and impacts in neighborhoods, but why we're trying to saturate services from the front is so people aren't living in their vehicles altogether. And if we can keep them in our outreach and connected to services, hopefully that is, that will be resolved from people moving into housing. But the impact of people just moving and coming back, again, that is going to happen, but it's our goal of not allowing encampments to grow and become permanent.
Good. So with these improvements, part of the frustrating case study that we were all looking at was that it was like six weeks between an initial contact with the homeless services staff and OPD coming to tell the person that they had. So does that, is it still going to be like many weeks or months between an initial contact and when, is that, that's still generally true?
We feel like we've been able to really tighten that up. And if there is someone who is prepared to move into housing, I'm ready, I'm eager, I want to, but there's just not a unit available, then that's really all we can do. We can say, please follow the ordinance, move every 24 hours, don't congregate next to another vehicle. We can do that. But now with what we're doing is really saturating services with homeless response up front and when we pass it over to Parking Services, it now becomes their priority in their queue. So we'll be seeing the consecutive tickets and then hand it over to OPD much quicker. Before, we didn't have that clear prioritization in Parking Services, but we're seeing that different with this policy change. And Tim, you can speak to that more, but we're trying to really tighten up the timeframe of when we could see it pass over to OPD if folks aren't prepared to move into housing and not follow the non-congregation sort of procedures that we've put into place.
Thank you so much, Darian. If I may just ask one question of Tim about the permit system, because we also have residents who are concerned that these new rules would mean that their mother-in-law, they can't keep their mother-in-law out on the sidewalk for five days when she comes to stay in her Tioga. And I just, could you explain how that seven days in a quarter, how do you go about obtaining that permit? How does that work?
Okay, so you're asking for a permit regarding someone living in RV as a mother-in-law?
If, yes, if you, no, if, well. We, there's a provision in these ordinances for a resident to ask for permission for a visitor to stay or for somebody coming to a municipal or a community event to stay in their camper, but there's a registration system and it says there's something. You could put on your windshield? Is that, I don't know how, if that's used, how well that's tried, but just to reassure folks that this isn't, this new ordinance isn't stopping you from having visiting family stay in front of your house for a couple nights.
Right. This isn't to direct towards that. And so when people want to call into Parking Services, we can explain the process, we can offer the approval ticket you would have to allow them to be there. The focus of this is on the clustering of the camping RVs that are causing nuisances in the community. One thing I wanted to talk about a little bit was the flow chart we created because that was a real big part of this process was creating a transparent process to the community on how the city responds and who responds at what point in the process. And so one thing I do want to mention though in this flow chart, at the very beginning top, it talks about how Parking Services issues a ticket. That's going to be corrected. We don't issue tickets right away. It's referred to homeless services. And then they go through their process. And then they go through their process. Tickets are really at the end of the process when no other options are really available. And we start the three consecutive ticket process. And so I just want to mention, mention that. And, and Darian's correct, it's, it's a high priority in responding to these cases. Parking services addresses both downtown parking, but addressing the camping is also a high priority. And we have a core group that meets weekly to prioritize and identify hotspots and needed areas. And so with that coordination occurs on a weekly basis, then we can prioritize and get folks out there more quickly.
Okay. I, I also want to make sure that we address your initial question about terminology that's used in the ordinance.
So in, in the description of various kinds of vehicles that you may or may not have in your driveway or on the curb, it just semi-trailers is one of them. And I'm wondering whether that's what we intended because it's alongside cargo trailer and RV. So just, just be clear what our intent is.
Yeah, we, I was just talking to Mark. We can, we can make that adjustment on second reading. So what I might suggest for tonight, Mayor, is a, a motion to approve the consent counter minus four E, minus four L. And then take that vote and then take your vote on four E and then take a vote on four L as amended. And then we'll bring that amendment back on second reading, if that works for you for process.
Okay. Is it related to this item, council member?
Yeah, we just need a specific amendment. Because there's a question about whether or not that's the right terminology. But I have, do you have an amendment, council member Gilman?
So if I may, I, I, what I would prefer is that we go ahead and vote on it as it is. And they, if, if it's, if it makes sense, they bring back an amended text next week for the final reading. Because I'm not clear if the issue was about semi-trucks, because that happens. Semi-trucks park in our neighborhood overnight. But we also have, I believe, a prohibition on people using Connex trailers and dumping them in front of the house as a storage, so.
We, we got the, the gist of, of what you're looking for here in terms of clarifier in this.
Okay. So at this time, what I'm hearing is that there is no request to pull item four L for separate action. Okay. All right. So before we adopt the consent calendar, council member partially, you have a comment on four E.
It's, it's a question. Because my understanding is Lacy is the administrator of this district. Are they also the one that does the search for board members? So my second part of this question, that's the first part, is if we do not vote to approve this person, what happens?
We would signal to Lacy that we did not vote to support it and ask them to go back and revisit their process. In which case, I suppose we could ask for that process to be broadened.
How, how urgent is it for this appointment? Is there, I understand it's only a meeting a year. Is the meeting coming up? There, it is?
Yeah, it's typically right after the first of the year and the first quarter of the year is when that happens. So typically there, we're trying to get appointments, always get appointments done by the end of the year. But again, it is not, to my knowledge, time sensitive that you have to do it tonight. So if, if you wish to vote this down, we'll communicate that back to Lacy and then I can get back to you in terms of next steps on process.
So if we vote this down, we're not just saying, yes, we approve and they do, they, or yes, or no, we don't approve and they can go forward because as administrators, are they allowed to move forward without our approval?
They are not.
Okay.
So I have a question before we move on about this, which is, is that if we are to vote it down, do we at least have thoughts about what this improvement of this process for the appointment looks like to offer to City of Lacey?
Point of order?
Yes.
Mayor, can we dispense with the rest of the consent calendar and then have a discussion about that if there's a motion? Because I don't even know if there will be a motion for that.
Okay. Well, well, let's go ahead and pull it for separate action. And we will go ahead and adopt the consent calendar minus four E.
I thought we moved for that. I think emotions are.
No, it was withdrawn because of all the confusion.
I move to approve the consent agenda, item minus four E, which will be used, acted on by separate action.
All those in favor of the consent calendar minus four E signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. So now I will entertain a motion for item four E for the approval to appoint Troy Kirby to the Capital Area Regional Public Facilities Board. Is there a second? All right, seeing none. So motion fails. So we will revisit this conversation around the appointment of Troy Kirby to the Capital Area Regional Public Facilities Board. And I will just state for the record that if we are going to deny this appointment, then we should offer the City of Lacey some of our thoughts about what an improved process looks like. So with that, we will move on to our public hearings for this evening. We actually have four. So we will begin with item five A, which is a public hearing on the preliminary capital facilities plan for our 2025 to 2030's financial plan. And here to present this evening is Casey Schaeffler, Associate Planner in the City's Community Planning and Development Department.
All right. Good evening. For the record, I'm Casey Schaeffler, Associate Planner in Community Planning and Development. I'm here this evening to provide a brief overview of the preliminary capital facilities plan with a focus on the 2025, 2030 financial plan. As a reminder, the CFP is volume two of the city's comprehensive plan and is updated annually. On October 6th, 2024, Principal Planner Joyce Phillips provided you a detailed presentation of the CFP with a look at individual funding chapters and projects. I'm going to primarily focus tonight on the advisory committee recommendation letters provided in your staff report packets. Programmatic information previously shared with you by Joyce is available for reference as an appendices in the slides included in your packet. But I will not be explicitly covering those in the presentation unless questions arise. So the projects that are included in the CFP come from the master plans that are developed to implement the comprehensive plan, such as the transportation master plan, the utilities master plans, and the Parks, Arts and Recreation Plan. Year one of the approved CFP is the capital budget for the following year. All right. 2025 projects by the eight program, eight programs with capital projects are shown here. These projects total $49.9 million. The majority of funds are going towards transportation and wastewater projects at 37% and 17% of proposed funding respectively. The city plans to fund those, these projects through a variety of 14 funding sources. Most of these sources are limited by law or city policy on what the funds can be used for. For example, transportation benefit district dollars cannot be used to build parks and parks money cannot be used to repair water reservoirs. The city is required to provide a balanced budget as well, meaning we must demonstrate the ability to pay for the projects identified in the six-year financial plan. The CFP is updated annually. The first six years of the plan must be financially constrained, which means we have estimates for the project costs and a realistic plan for how the, the city will pay for them. This slide shows the anticipated costs of the projects planned between 2025 and 2030 by program. These projects have an estimated cost of just over $285 million. Between 2025 and 2030, the majority of capital costs are for transportation, waste resources, and Parks, Arts and Recreation projects. This slide shows the funding strategy planned to pay for those projects proposed for the years 2025 through 2030. There are 14 funding sources that will be used to fund the improvements. Again, most of these funds are dedicated for certain types of projects. So now moving on to the comment and advisory, excuse me, comment letters and the advisory committees. You may recall that there were a significant number of public comments received in previous years, primarily about sidewalk funding and sidewalk repair and maintenance issues. This year, no written feedback was submitted. At the Planning Commission Finance Subcommittee, one verbal comment was received, again focusing on sidewalk issues and bicycle infrastructure. There were no comments provided at the Planning Commission's public hearing. Several city advisory committees review portions of the CFP, primarily to review for consistency with the comprehensive plan and master plan specific to their chapter of interest. I'm going to go through each of these highlights from each of these committees tonight. I do want to point out that we do have Kristin Lamson, the Chair of the UAC or Utilities Advisory Committee here with us tonight. I'm not sure if we have anyone from BPAC or PrAC though. The UAC, the Utility Advisory Committee unanimously approved the plan. They found it to be guided by and consistent with the utility management plans, which were developed to be reflective of the growth and development objectives established in the city's comprehensive plan. In general, the CFP, as it applies to city utilities, anticipates that current projects can be funded with estimated revenues. However, as mentioned in, in the letter, they are aware of the capital project funding challenges faced by all four utilities and have concerns with capital projects being deferred. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, one topic reoccurred as a focal point, which was whether automatic inflationary increases should be included. Upon extensive discussion among the Parks and Recreation Committee members and city staff, the majority of PrAC members did not feel comfortable recommending the inflationary increase be included at this time. The PrAC approved the CFP as, with a vote of seven to one. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee expressed appreciation for new funding and focus on projects that benefit all members of the Olympia community, not just those who drive. However, two major areas for improvement are recommended. They would like to see metrics for projects and transparency on how those projects are chosen and prioritized. They expressed an overarching concern that even with, if all transportation projects were to be implemented, Olympia's transportation system still overwhelmingly prioritizes car dependency. Moving on to the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission has a different role and focus as it is tasked with looking at the entire CFP and its relation to the comprehensive plan, soliciting public comments and holding a public hearing. The Chair of the Planning Commission, Zainab Najati, is unable to, to attend this evening. However, we do have Vice Chair Greg Queaton here to answer any questions here, if you have any, in a moment. And I want to appreciate, extend my appreciation for his willingness to represent the Planning Commission should council have any questions about their comment letter. Comments from the Planning Commission include support for the CFP as it is in general alignment with the comprehensive plan. The Commission continues its support for funding pedestrian and bicycle improvements with an added recommendation that such recommend, uh, excuse me, that, with an additional recommendation that such funding be directed to capital sidewalk and bicycle improvements and repairs, not associated with other major roadway projects. Other recommendations of the Commission are to improve performance measures and connections of projects to adopted strategies and goals, identifying total project costs, including maps to show where planned projects are located, providing a summary of budget history, and providing additional information about funding, such as the ending balance for the previous years, limitations on fund uses, and information about each funding source. So moving along, each year, the city incorporates by reference the Olympia School District and North Hurston Public School District capital facility plans. However, the Olympia School District is not proposing to collect impact fees for 2025. It is being recommended to still adopt both district plans in order to show why the city is not charging impact fees for Olympia School District in 2025, but is for North Hurston Public Schools. Plus, the Olympia School District's plan covers several years and shows their future plans. Representatives from both school districts were invited to come in and attend as well. So with that, before I open, pass it back to you to provide the public hearing, I do want to express my personal appreciation for our advisory committees and the amount of work that they put into reviewing this document. This is several hundred pages long. And this is a group of volunteers that has put a lot of time into reviewing this. So just on behalf of my colleagues that are also staff liaisons, really want to appreciate the time and effort of our advisory committees and the input from the community on this process. So if there's any questions, I'm here to answer those where possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Any questions from the council? Council member Gilman?
I would love to hear from Greg from the Planning Commission about the, I, I, I saw an intriguing proposal about having a biennial approach to the CFP, about making it a two-year cycle. Could you speak to your conversation a little bit?
Uh, yeah, so we understand that's a possibility. Greg Queaton, Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. And we've, we've, as we've reviewed this, I've reviewed it the last couple of years. And capital projects take a long time. So some of these, we, we thought that some of these projects would benefit from kind of the two years, give staff more time to make the changes that we talk about. There's a couple of reports that, that are outstanding, but those also take time. So it's kind of a idea of both Planning Commission and council time being used best.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. I appreciated the letter.
Yeah.
And then I just also wanted to elevate, BPAC doesn't have a representative here, but they had a call, and maybe it's because I agree with it, but they had an interesting call to, to look at transformational versus incremental sort of change. And when do you ever get to considering the big changes to the network if you're always trying to patch up the existing network? So I just, I would urge you to take a look at BPAC's letter. I think it was a, a strong letter this year also.
Council member partially.
I just want to speak to the biennial idea. As finance committee for a couple of years has talked about the entire budget going biennial. And I think it's on the radar once we work our way through the current budget woes. Am I wrong? Okay.
All right. Any additional questions or comments? Council member Vanderpool.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things that stuck out to me when I was reading through some of the letters from the Planning Commission, from BPAC. And so to me, a couple of them were that there's, it seems like there's a, not really an ask, but setting clear priority, project priorities to guide decision-making should constrain staff, necessitate, or other challenges delay project schedules. And that kind, that was coming from the Planning Commission. But BPAC also set a clear strategy on how transitioning from car dependency to transportation freedom. Now, we do have the transportation master plan. And I appreciate that, that all of the projects that are in there. And we are budgetarily constrained. But I, and I, but I, I want to highlight that I do also believe that in, in this golden standard that is mentioned by BPAC, this, this need to work through these larger capital projects. But the, but I keep running into the fact that there are serious funding constraints. And I really would love to see, I like most of these comments because I had written, worked on BPAC on those comments last year myself. And I, I feel, I, I want to express that I also understand the need to do that. I really do. And I, I want you to understand that the staff also feels that there's a need to get a lot of these projects funded. But it, but because of the limitations in funding, it makes it really hard to get there and it will take time. And I just want to highlight that.
Thank you, Council member Vanderpool. Any additional comments or questions? City manager Bernie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I just wanted to point out, just, I think a lot of the community knows and the council knows is that we have a new funding source through the Transportation Benefit District. District. And this was year one of collecting those funding, of that funding, and council has directed that funding goes towards bike-ped type projects. And we also are in the middle of hiring a new engineer to help us advance design, and part of that funding was to pay for that position. And we're fairly close to having a position in place that's going to help us with that. So I think what we'll see in the coming years of the CFP is more of those bike-ped projects rise to the top in the CFP at a faster pace than they would have without that funding and without that position. So I just want to highlight that. I think the transportation staff, we all understand the need to get there faster in some, in some instances, but help is on the way, and I think we're going to see that reflected in the next coming, next couple of year's CFPs.
Thank you. Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I've got a question for, no, not, sorry, not you, Casey. Greg, he was sitting right behind you, sorry. I was reading through the comment around prioritizing road maintenance in areas where we could change the, how that road is traveled. So, you know, sometimes referred to as a road diet, I think is what y'all are getting at. And so is your request here that we, you know, that we identify areas where we should be doing that, or is it that there's areas that are already identified and you just want to see those put to the top of the list?
I think more the former, kind of goes with some of the comments in B-PAC as well, to find these prioritizations between the somewhat siloed categories in the CFP. And so if we have sidewalk connectivity goals or protected bike lanes or something like that, and there's an opportunity that we have road that needs to be maintained in those like two areas, kind of weight some of those other goals when we're choosing between the two.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions or comments? I do want to mention that we keep using the acronym B-PAC repeatedly over and over. It means Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And just to clarify, it is on the staff report as, or excuse me, on the agenda as a link, and it says Bicycle and Registration Advisory Committee Comment Letter. That is not correct, and we are referring to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. So if there are no additional questions or comments, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on the Preliminary Capital Facilities Plan for 2025 through 2030 Financial Plan. We do not have anyone signed up for public comment at this time, so standard practice is to open it up to those who are in person in the chambers who wish to testify on this item. Is there anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak? Going once? Going twice? All right. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on the Preliminary Capital Facilities Plan for 2025 through 2030 Financial Plan. Okay, so that takes us to our next item, Item 5B, which is also a public hearing on the 2025 Ad Valorem Tax. And here to present online this evening is Joan Lutz, the city's Budget and Finance Manager.
Council Manager, I'm here to discuss the 2025 Ad Valorem Tax with you. Just a quick reminder, there are limitations on the Ad Valorem Tax. State law limits growth on property tax revenue for a district to 1% or the implicit price deflator, whichever is less. For 2025 collections, the IAPD is 2.57%, so we will be using the 1% plus new construction, changes in state assessed property, and refunds, which are not constrained to that limitation and as long as they don't go over our statutory maximum. Below, you'll see our statutory maximum. We start out with a base of $3.60. We have a reduction for the Library District, but we also have an addition for the pre-lost firefighters pension fund. So our statutory maximum is actually $3.32.5. To calculate our levy rate, we get the assessed value, which is done by the county assessor, and they, we divide that by a thousand for the assessed value. And then we utilize the revenue that the city has determined needed and come up with the levy rate. It is one of the more complicated processes for coming up with a tax rate. So below, we have some examples to kind of, kind of show how that is done. So the county in year one is up with a $1 billion assessment for property. The district decides the, or assesses that they need a million dollars in revenue. Using that formula, that calculates out to a levy rate of a dollar per thousand. The following year, the assessed value comes in at 1.3 billion. However, the city would be limited to the 1% constraint, and so that gives us $1,010,000. Based on that calculation, that comes up with a levy rate of 78 cents per thousand. You can see that year three, again, 1.6 billion, the 1% constraint works out to a levy rate of 64 cents per thousand. For year four, just to kind of show the inverse, if the assessed rate goes down to 1.5 billion, we're still limited to the 1% cap, but that does bring the levy rate up to 69 cents per The city of Olympia is just a small portion of the whole property tax dollar amount. In our 2024 distribution, we are 19.2% of that tax amount, and you can see that the other, other facilities have greater portions, such as the Olympic School District, sorry, the Olympia School District, Washington State Schools, et cetera. So for 2025, we have the assessed value of 11 points, almost 11.6 billion. Our 2024 highest levy collections amount is 20 million, almost 20.7 million. And so with a 1% factor, that gets us to 20.8, almost 20.9 million. With our new construction currently at 94,000 and a refund levy of 852,000, that means our legal add-ons are 946,000. And so that works out to a collection rate of 21.8 million dollars and a levy rate of That is, that was for our general levy amount. This is for the excess levy, which is for the 2008 debt to pay for the service bond for fire service assets. It was, the bond was issued in 2009, or 2009, with a final maturity of 2029, to pay for fire stations, fire training facility and equipment. The collections for that in 2025 are one, a little over, almost 1.1 billion dollars, which includes the refund rate of 49,000. So just for some comparison, so you can see what the normal citizen would pay, taxpayer would pay, based on a $300,000 assessed value home. For the regular city property tax, it would be $565 a year. The excess levy for the fire stations would add on $28.67 for a total of almost $600 a year. And then with the OMPD levy rate of $149, that would get us to 743 per year. You can see the different amounts all the way up to 600,000 in assessed value. I also wanted to, as a final note, let you know that based on the constraints of timing, you will see the ordinance on November 12th, or is it the 17th? I think it's the 12th, and that will come to as our first and final meeting. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Joan. And the city manager is confirming that it is on the agenda for November 12th, so thank you. Any questions from the dais? Councilmember Gilman.
I'm full of questions tonight. Joan, could you help me understand? You were just describing the regular Olympia levy and then the excess levy and the OMPD. And in the pie chart, you'd said Olympia was 19.2% of, of property tax. Is that the three, the three taxes together, or is that 19.2% is the regular, the regular levy?
That's the regular levy.
Okay. Do you, do you happen to know, or is it on that pie chart to say what are, what the total, the percentage that comes to Olympia of, of property tax for our residents?
I don't think we included that because this is strictly based on the regular.
There's.
Oh, well, OMPD is 4.8%.
5%? And then the excess levy is at the public safety?
That is not the public safety.
It's not the public safety?
Yeah, that one's not on here at all.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have it here, but it's, so it's someplace closer to 25% or something altogether? Yeah?
Roughly. We can find out for the next meeting, and I can have that available for you.
Thank you, Joan. And then something I haven't followed, and I was going to ask in your previous presentation, was about the, the new construction, the changes in state assessed property, and the refunds not being constrained to the 1%. So what are they charged? Are they charged at the 2.57 that's our allowed amount, or is it some calculated amount that keeps us within our allowed total assessment?
So they would be calculated at last, well, 2024's rate, because those, you know, the new construction and the state assessed, all of that happened in the prior year. And so we get the 2024 rate for 2025, and then those numbers are already factored into the assessed value total for 2025.
So it, that, so it, and it was a very small amount, like the total adjustment for construction was a couple hundred thousand dollars on all these, so maybe it's not a hugely significant number. I just, I'll have another lesson another day where I'll try to understand how that adjustment is made. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional, additional questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none. At this time, I am going to open the public hearing on the 2025 Ad Valorem Tax. We also don't have anyone signed up to testify this evening on Item 5B. So is there anyone in the chambers who wishes to testify on this item, 2025 Ad Valorem Tax? Seeing none. Going once? Going twice? At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on the 2025 Ad Valorem Tax. All right. I think Joan may have left us, but thank you, Joan, wherever you, oh, you're still there. Well, thank you so much for your time this evening. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
Okay. So that takes us to Item 5C, which is a public hearing on the Transportation Improvement Program. And I have Joey Jones here, the Transportation Project Engineer with the city presenting on this item. Hi, Joey.
Good evening. My name is Joey Jones, and I'm a Public Works Project Engineer with Transportation. Also, Sophie Stimson is here, the Transportation Director, in case there's, she can help with additional questions. So throughout this presentation, I'm going to refer to the Transportation Improvement Program as the TIP. The TIP is a document that we submit to the Washington State Department of Transportation. Olympia is required to submit a TIP in order to communicate our planned transportation projects to the state. This also allows Olympia to apply for federal grants. The TIP identifies projects to improve the city's transportation system, and it's a reflection of the 2025 Preliminary Capital Facilities Plan, or CFP. Essentially, the same lists of transportation projects and funding sources that are shown in the TIP are also in the CFP. Both the CFP and the TIP are updated annually to reflect the changes to the timing of a project, the status of project funding, or to add new projects. Because they reflect the same projects, the TIP is presented to city council for adoption alongside the CFP in the fall of each year. So attached to the staff report, you'll find two documents. The first is a summary of all the TIP, TIP projects in a user-friendly format, and then the second is the more detailed official TIP document that is required and submitted to WashDOT. The TIP's not set up in any project priority order, but rather first-listed are individual projects that have secured or pending grant funds. Next in the list order are our annual programs that are also shown in the CFP, and I'll touch more on this in a minute. And then lastly, we usually, or normally would show any parks, trail projects that have federal funding. However, this six-year TIP does not include any parks, trail projects, as parks did not have any planned trail projects that have federal funding on them at this time. So I'm going to touch briefly on some of the individual projects. Again, those are those first projects that are in the TIP that have secured or pending grant funds. So first is Montman Road. This project includes sidewalks, enhanced bike lanes, street and pedestrian lighting, and enhanced crossings. These improvements will include pedestrian and bike path on the north side of Montman Road that includes a bridge for beds and bikes to cross over Percival Creek. This project will be designed and constructed with a $7.6 million grant that we have from WashDOT's Connecting Washington Program. We are targeting construction for 2026 or 2027. The next on the list is the Martin Way Pedestrian Safety Improvements. This project was a priority location from our most recent street safety plan. This project will include median islands, mid-block crossings with refuge, a flashing beacon system, bus island with a raised and separated bike lane. This project will begin design in 2025, anticipated construction in '26, and we have applied for and just recently received our award letter for a $1.1 million grant from WashDOT's City Safety Grant Program. Next on the list is the Capital Way South Overlay. This project will resurface the street on Capital Way. It will also reconfigure travel lanes on Capital Way and Capital Boulevard from approximately Capitol Campus to the Tumwater City Limits. The street will be modified from four travel lanes to three in each, three. This will give us room to add bike lanes and also slow traffic. This project is still under scoping, but we hope to begin official design in 2025 and 2026. This, and then we're targeting construction in the '27, '28, even, and potentially even further out, depending on grants that we receive. We're currently planning to apply for a National Highway System and Asset Management Grant of approximately $2.5 million to help in the construction of this project, but this could change as we get further into the design of the project and get more solidified costs. The Martin Way Corridor Project is next. This project is to design improvements that would include roundabouts, sidewalks on both sides of the street, enhanced crosswalks, enhanced bike lanes, access control, and possibly even business access and transit or BAT lanes. Given the scope of this project, we are only currently showing design phase. During design, we will likely be evaluating a phased approach for construction. We have applied for a $2.5 million grant to help with the design, and then over the next two years, we will be further scoping out this project and then would begin design in 2028 when those grant funds become available, if received. And the last on the list is the Pacific Avenue Enhanced Crosswalks. This project would construct, would design and construct three to five enhanced crosswalks between Poplar and Birch Street, as well as Steel and Deerheart Drive. These enhancements would include high-visibility crosswalk markings, pedestrian refuge islands, flashing beacons, and advanced stop here for pedestrian signs and markings. We've applied for a $1.5 million grant to help us design and construct these crossings. That, that funding, if received, would become available in 2028 when we would design and with potential construction beginning in 2029. So as I mentioned previously, the TIP also presents, presents the six annual transportation programs as shown in the CFP. So these six programs are our Bicycle Improvements, Intersection Improvements, Street Repair and Reconstruction, Major Street Reconstruction, Sidewalks and Pathways, Access and Safety Improvements. This allows us to apply for grants for the individual projects listed in those annual programs. So information on the individual projects within these programs can be found in the CFP. So in conclusion, the city's, city manager's recommendation is to hold the public hearing tonight. City council is scheduled to adopt a resolution approving the 2026 TIP on December 10th of 2024, the same night as the CFP adoption is proposed. So on that note, I'll turn it back to you for. So on that note, I'll turn it back to you for, to, you know, any questions, as well as hold the public.
Thank you, Joey. Any questions from council? Councilmember Vanderpool.
Not really questions. I think that these are great projects. I think that going forward, this, it's getting a lot of these little parts that used to be highways, converting them down into much safer places is definitely going to help, not just for the people who live there, but for future people who live there. When we do projects like this, like a redo of a street, if we're able to do, really make Martin Way a safer place, there's the potential of attracting more development along there. And so I do think that these are good projects, and I, if we could, if I could find a way to fund it today, I would. So I really appreciate the work on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Vanderpool, or excuse me, councilmember partially, followed by councilmember Cooper.
I don't know if this is a question or a statement. I read through this, and I saw the Deshutes Estuary Restoration Project. I'm assuming not just the Fifth Street Bridge, but the roadway that is currently there. How much of this are we going to be able to wrap into any funding we get for the total restoration?
I honestly don't know a lot about this project, as it's, City of Olympia is not the lead. This is all owned by DES, Department of Enterprise Services. We are including this in our TIP in order to help them receive federal grants. There would be no Olympia funds going to the project.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Cooper, followed by councilmember Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. And I realize this is probably a capital facilities plan question, but I'll ask it just because you put it on the map and in a different way than I had in my mind, and that's, can you talk about why we're only looking at south Capital Way and not Capital Way from Tumwater to the market for the new overlay?
So for the overlay would really only be Capital Way, which would be from roughly Capitol Campus to about twenty-fifth, and that's because that's an asphalt street. So that's the material that the street is made out of. South of that, the street is concrete, and so you can't do an overlay. You could do an overlay on concrete, but that would reduce your curb height. So what would be, and the street is actually in fairly good shape south of kind of where the I five bridge is. And again, that's all concrete. We would be looking at doing repairs to some of the concrete panels that have specific cracks in them, but it wouldn't be an overlay project. But what we're doing is, as part of this overlay project, would be to also do that lane reallocation on that south part. So the north part would be overlay with lane reallocation. The south part would just be reallocating lane space with some repairs where needed.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because I jumbled terms and overlay. Me, I was really talking about the lane reconfiguration. And in my mind, I'm just thinking about how weird it's going to be to go from a narrow parkway to a highway and then back into downtown. And so I feel like that, we need to do a treatment from Tumwater to the market. That's the question I'm asking.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I can just add a little bit more context. We do have long-term plans to address from roughly Union North, I think is what you're getting at, towards a farmer's market. In the TNP, you'll see a project there to also do a lane reduction. In that case, we wouldn't be adding bike lanes. We'd actually, the proposal is to move the curbs in and increase the sidewalk space, but we would be going down to three lanes, similar to what Joey's describing, through the residential area towards Tumwater. So the very long-term plan would be for a three-lane cross-section in the north, in the downtown and north.
Great. I appreciate that. So then, I think my questions for whether it's this year or later, it feels to me like at minimum, they need to be sequenced, so you have public comment, public process around the whole Capital Way corridor at one time, even if they're sequenced into a part two from a part one. Personally, I would much rather, I would like to talk about how to move that part B into a more near-term horizon.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. I think that one is so transformative, because we're changing the curbs, there's street trees, there's just a lot more planning that goes into it. We can certainly look at moving that up, but I guess I can't respond exactly with what the timing would be. I do want to point out, though, that that was part of the, one of the downtown streets projects that we spent a lot of time on, I think in like twenty eighteen, and there was a lot of public support for that project, too. So.
Yeah, that's somewhere in my mind, like, we're supposed to go there from Franklin, right? And there was a big delay.
Yeah, there is a big delay there. There's just a lot with phones and Martin Way and Mottman. There's a lot in the queue right now. But I do want to really quickly say something about Joey's working on the design of the stretch that he just talked about through the residential area, and we do have a transition into Tumwater. You brought that up just really briefly, and we will make it work to go from our cross-section into Tumwater's cross-section. But yeah, I just want to acknowledge, we heard that, too.
Yeah, thank you. And in fact, in that, we should be asking Tumwater where their roundabout at Carlin is in the plan, and if there's a way to connect those projects at the same time. But those are conversations for another day, and maybe just look at whether it would be possible within funding and mission to connect those in a little bit more clear way. So, thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, that was Sophie Stimson, the city's transportation director. Any additional questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on the Transportation Improvement Program. Also, no one has signed up for this public hearing, so is there anyone in chambers that wishes to testify in the public hearing on the Transportation Improvement Program? Going once? Going twice? At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on the Transportation Improvement Program. All right. So that takes us to our final public hearing for this evening, item five D, which is a public hearing on the twenty twenty five Preliminary Operating Budget. And presenting this evening is the city's city manager, Jay Burney.
Thank you, Mayor Councilmembers. Again, good evening. For the record, Jay Burney, city manager. Tonight is the first of two public hearings on the twenty twenty five operating budget. Your final public hearing is scheduled on November twelfth. All of our conversation to date has been around the general fund, parks funding, and development fee funds. Later this evening, you will receive a presentation on rates, fees, and dedicated funds, so the community will have a chance to see those in advance of the final public hearing on November twelfth. I'm going to present a quick recap tonight to set the stage for tonight's public hearing. I'm going to move pretty quickly through the slides, as everything you see and will see here tonight is just a review of our discussions to date. There are no new updates tonight. Those will happen as part of our final budget balancing on November nineteenth, so we can, you can take into consideration anything you hear there tonight or within your public hearing on the twelfth. We are always working towards a sustainable budget. If we want to be in a position of having a sustainable budget, that means we stay within our means and fund ongoing needs with ongoing revenues. Our work is always rooted in the comprehensive plan. This is the community's plan. It is the community's vision for our city. It's a big document, and so, as council knows, over the years, we've broken it down into these five focus areas that help us better communicate the work of the city in connecting to the comprehensive plan. Through our community survey work the past few years, the community has consistently told us that our top priorities should be housing homelessness, climate change, economic development, really livability, the cost of living in Olympia, public safety, and transportation. The majority of our programs and services are funded by the general fund. The general fund revenues include sales tax, property tax, and BNO tax as a significant contributors. General fund revenues are more fluid, less predictable, and less stable, and are the largest portion of our funding. Dedicated funds provide more of a stable source of revenue for things like our utilities, parks, and transportation. Seventy-one percent of our expense is our personnel. So as I've said before, and as we had a discussion last week in your study session, it's difficult to make reductions in the budget without impacting people. Our budget assumptions for a wage adjustment for independent employees, as well as the cost benefits are shown here, cost of benefits are shown here. You're going to be receiving a presentation later this evening on the class and compensation study, on the costs to implement that are included in the baseline budget. You have three significant additions to the general fund that are included in the budget, which we have previously discussed, around public defense, community planning and development, and community oversight and law enforcement, and the youth council. You also have several enhancements to the budget included that are revenue-neutral and not additive to the general fund. They are funded either by utility rates, our fees, and they are in apartment, in the fire department, public works department, and strategic communications. The total proposed general fund reductions are around three point two million dollars and encompass a mix of permanent reductions, staffing changes, there are adjustments to position classifications, and some delayed hires. Twenty-six point seven five positions are proposed to be eliminated across all funds at a total of three point five million. In twenty twenty six, as a reminder, the assistant city manager position, one of two, will be permanently reduced, along with some other positions that become vacant mid-year, meaning we have already booked close to five hundred thousand dollars in reductions as we head into twenty twenty six that aren't reflected in this budget. Also included is about two point four million dollars in baseline adjustments that we've previously discussed with the council. These are adjustments that we make from the time we first start looking at the budget, and we learn more as we go along, we make adjustments. We made some updates to our early revenue projections as well, which I covered in-depth last week. As of this evening, our current budget deficit is around three point nine million dollars. Estimated twenty twenty four general fund balance is eighteen point six million, which includes our ten percent reserve of eleven point four and around seven point two in funding above your required ten percent. As discussed last week, the proposed plan that I will bring you on the nineteenth is to utilize fund balance for the remaining three point nine million dollar deficit for the twenty twenty five budget, which will leave you with a fund balance moving forward of about thirteen percent or fourteen point seven million. I believe, as I told you last week, that's conservative at this point, because I think our estimates for how we'll end twenty twenty four remain conservative, which I'm grateful to the finance team to be in that place. And as I mentioned last week, the reductions that we're making help us make progress in our ten-year forecast. We come fairly close to breaking even in twenty twenty six and in twenty twenty seven, but we'll need continued focus and work, and potentially further reductions or new revenues into the future to continue to have a sustainable budget. In terms of next steps in the budget process, next week, you will hold your second round of public hearings on the twenty twenty five operating budget, and final budget balancing is planned for November nineteenth, with a stopover at the Finance Committee on November eighteenth to summarize everything before it gets to you on the nineteenth, which means we'll be done with your balancing by, before Thanksgiving, and that'll give the finance team adequate time to prepare all the ordinances to be brought before you by December tenth. That concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions before you turn it over to the public hearing.
Any questions from council? All right. Councilmember Vanderpool.
It's not really a question, but I, you know, I would like to say that, you know, this has not been easy. This is my first year on council, and I've had many discussions with each one of you, but I've also had conversations with Jay about this. And, you know, it, staff reductions, reducing work plans, these are things that are not easy, especially someone like me who's really interested in getting some good policy done and trying to work ahead. I mean, it's not, I'm probably not the only one who says that they've, you know, lost sleep over this, and how it's not an easy task to be done, but it's a task that needs to be done. You know, we all throw our hats in this because we believe in public service, and I just kind of want to speak to that for a moment, and to say that, you know, we, and the staff, and everyone here at the city do public service because we believe in it, and going through this, going through a crisis, but going through a downturn like this, and having to do that is, makes it much more difficult. You know, we'll survive, though. I may not have the same amount of brown hair, but we will survive. So I just wanted to take a moment to speak on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Vanderpool. Any additional questions or comments?
I just want to say, I appreciate the comment. I had no gray in my beard in twenty nineteen before I became city manager, so I totally get it.
All right. Well, I'll just reiterate that this is the first of two public hearings on the budget, and so the next one, as you can see on the screen here, is on November twelfth. So if there are no further questions, thank you, city manager Burney. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on the twenty twenty five Preliminary Operating Budget. And there is also no one signed up for this hearing, so I will go ahead and open it up to those who are in the chambers, if there is anyone who wishes to testify on the twenty twenty five Preliminary Operating Budget. Going once, going twice, seeing none. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on the twenty twenty five Preliminary Operating Budget. Okay. So that takes us to our business items for the evening. We will begin with item six A, which is the Classification and Compensation Study Briefing. And here to present this evening is Manny Bossa, our Human Resources Director, and Katie Bush, the Lead Compensation Consultant with HR Compensation Consultants LLC. Good evening, Manny.
Good evening, Mayor Payne, and city council members. Glad to be here. So for the record, Manny Bossa, Director of HR. My pronouns are he/him/his, and I am joined remotely by Katie Bush, who is a principal in Human Resource Compensation Consultants, HRCC. And so a little about Katie's background, while working for a major consulting firm, she was the lead consultant or project manager for more than a hundred and fifty compensation studies, so we're in, I think, pretty good hands. Since starting her own consulting practice in two thousand and three, Katie's work has really been focused on government, private sector, not-for-profits, with about half of her business actually focused on local governments. So why this, why now? So the last compensation study that the city completed was in two thousand and eighteen, so it's been a few years. And so while there have been wage adjustments for independents during that time in the form of a COLA, it also has meant that we've not been as competitive as we could have been in terms of our ability to attract and retain quality talent. And so we needed stronger guidelines and a standard process for maintaining job classifications and competitive pay. So we engaged the services of HRCC last year, a little over a year ago, and had been really fortunate to work with Katie and her team on this project. The original scope included about two hundred and fifty-seven independent employees, but based on a request from AFSCME and the operating engineers, we added those folks as well. And so we're looking at roughly four hundred and fifty-plus employees and covering more than two hundred and sixty job descriptions. It has been quite the undertaking. So for purposes of this presentation, we're going to focus on the independents, and the reason that we're going to do that is we have bargaining obligations with our labor partners, and so we want to respect that process as we move forward. So what are the ideal goals of a job and pay framework that we're creating and maintaining internal equity as it relates to our job classification and pay structure? That we're competitive, so that we maintain the ability to attract and retain talented staff? That we're aligned with the mission and values of the city? That we're fiscally responsible? And that we're providing good guidance in terms of a pay structure and job structure for managers to make decisions, not only at hire, but promotions and other sort of opportunities that might lend themselves to increases in pay? So at this time, I think I'd like to turn it over to Katie to provide additional detail, and she'll describe and further detail the job and pay framework.
Great. Manny, you can hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Excellent. I wanted to, if you'll go to the compensation data slide. I wanted to let the council know that in our proposal, we propose to work together to survey up to twelve organizations that had all of these different criteria that we evaluated, based on the organization's ability to attract talent and also to retain employees as well. And so we worked with the City of Olympia. We identified nine cities that have similar population and offer similar services. In addition, for those jobs with transferable skills, so skills that are transferable to a variety of employers in Washington State, we included general industry data for employers with up to five hundred employees. And that's through our published survey source. So we did a custom survey, if you look on the next slide. So we did a custom survey, if you look on the next slide, of those nine cities, and then we included, thank you, those cities right there, and then we included a private sector data point for those jobs that have easily transferable skill sets. Now, we gather from these local organizations pay data on key benchmark positions. And benchmarks are those jobs where work is very similar to that of the work that's performed in the city of Olympia. So we look at these organizations, we identify key benchmark positions, and I want to tell you a little bit about what we found, if you'll go to the next slide. And again, as Manny said, this is focused on independent employees, but for director and above jobs, we recommend using open pay ranges. So these are jobs that are assigned to levels 10 through 14 in the new structure. For the benchmark jobs in these grades, we compared the current pay of the individual person in that benchmark job to the market reference point, and we found on average that Olympia was paying about 2.43% behind the market. Now, most of the benchmarks in these levels, when we looked at all the benchmarks for these jobs, most of them, most of the benchmarks were behind the market reference point. And so for those that were lower than the market reference point, they actually averaged about 9.55% behind the market. So some jobs, of course, were very close to labor market, and some were paid a little bit over the market reference point, but most of the benchmarks were actually below. In fact, if you go to the next slide, we actually found this in the jobs in grades or levels 1 through 8. So for those jobs, we actually recommend a step plan, which is consistent with what your current practice is. Now, of course, there's many more benchmarks in these levels because there's a lot more jobs, but the same is true. There are more benchmark jobs behind the market reference point than there are that are close to or ahead of the market reference point. And again, that pay is averaging over 9% below the market reference point, in fact, 9.83% for those benchmarks that are under the market reference point. So the timing is good, the timing is right to catch up and implement a new pay plan for the independent jobs. We have a job framework. As Manny said, one of the purposes of doing a new pay plan is to have a balance not only of competitive wages, knowing what's being paid in the labor market, but also laying a foundation for what we call internal job alignment or internal equity. And so to help align jobs, HRCC recommends that Olympia use our role and level job framework. So this system, again, was applied to independent jobs, identifies what kind of role the job plays. Is it a leader or a people manager? Or is it an individual contributor? And if the job is an individual contributor, what kind of role is that? Is it a professional, a technician, or associate? These are labels that we use to categorize work. And then within each of those roles, there are multiple levels: entry, intermediate, senior, specialist, lead worker, et cetera. Now, going forward, as jobs change, or there are new jobs that are added, which I just heard there were some grants coming up, so I'm thinking there's some new jobs that are going to be added in the next couple of years, we want to make sure that Olympia HR uses the same methodology to evaluate jobs. So that ensures that internally the jobs are aligned. Of course, they would also go back to the same nine market survey sources and ensure that when they put those two pieces together, that the job, a new or changed job is placed in the right grade. And this ensures going forward integrity and upkeep of the pay plan. On the next slide, in terms of our independent pay framework recommendations, the overall structure has 14 grades, again, open pay ranges for the jobs in pay grades 10 through 14. That basically means they have a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum value as reference points for making pay decisions. And for the lower-level jobs in grades 1 through 9, they have a five-step pay plan with 5% between steps. So we recommend implementing the 2024 market ranges by placing everyone on a step if they're in grades 1 through 9, or if they're in those open ranges, let's make sure that their pay is at least at the minimum of the pay range. Then, on January 1st, shift the pay ranges by the COLA, just as you usually would do, using the CPIU for Seattle from June. We do recommend using that full value of 3.8% as the city manager had indicated in his report, and shifting the pay steps by that amount and increasing the employee pay by 3.8% if they're in those open pay ranges. If you go to the next slide, this is a list of the deliverables that are included in our project. So it's our analysis, our reports, our recommendations, as well as the procedures or the processes to maintain the system, which are also available into 2025 to provide ad hoc support as the new plan moves through approval, implementation, and communications. We also, so after we did all of this work, so we have the new pay plan, we have the implementation approach, we figured out what each person's pay would be going forward in the new system. After we developed our recommendations, we then did a pay equity analysis. So we reviewed each person's pay in the new pay ranges to identify if there were any pay gaps, and we included two key criteria: gender and time and position. And so what we were looking for was, we were looking for anything that appeared to need further review. And so we were able to identify 60 positions that needed further review. So these could be minor differences in pay that can be explained by things that are not related to discrimination reasons. So they're nondiscriminatory, legitimate reasons, things like differences in education, knowledge, skills, certifications, experiences. So we could not find a discernible indication of pay inequities. And certainly going forward, with the processes, the procedures, the data that's now available as part of this process, the pay inequities, if in fact one was to occur, it would certainly be mitigated or eliminated before it ever happened because now there's much more information and a more robust process involved. On the next slide, as Jay mentioned, for the independent employees, the estimate or the investment to bring pay to a competitive level, the $1.1 million number that he referenced, that is included in the operating budget. This investment could change due to a variety of factors. So that could be internal equity considerations, if there's any changes between now and the beginning of the year on organizational changes or reporting relationships. That number could potentially change. And then the 3.8% COLA for independent employees that I suggested move forward, January 1st, that number is also included in the budget. Maintaining the system going forward is very important, and so we've provided and been the Human Resources Department, thank you, Manny and your team, for being involved over the course of the last year in really understanding how the job and pay framework has been developed, how the job descriptions were developed. A certain thank you too to department heads for their participation in the process, and employees as well in completing position questionnaires and giving us good information to update the job descriptions. This whole plan, if it's maintained properly, which we have all of the procedures, will ensure that you'll remain in a competitive stance now and into the future. Manny, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Katie. So that is our presentation this evening. If I might, I'd like to thank the entire HR team, as well as our managers and directors who've worked with us alongside of Katie and her team over the last year. So happy to take questions at this point.
Thank you very much, Manny, and thank you very much, Katie, for that explanation. So are there any questions from the council? Councilmember Partially.
One, it was rewarding to see no pay inequities. I appreciate that. You never know when you start something like that, that you could find what you find. What I forgot to ask the other night was, when you're leveling up, how are we ensuring there's equity in the leveling up?
So Katie, would you like to speak to that, and then I can join in if need be?
Yeah. So I want to clarify or talk about the job descriptions and the job framework, the job alignment. One of the things that's, I don't know if you want to go back to the job framework slide, if that would be a nice visual. One of the things I love about this particular process is that we get to start from scratch with a new set of eyes, and it says job framework, roles, and levels. There you go. And so we gather information directly, certainly from employees. They fill out what's called a position questionnaire. We review that information against the current job description and highlight things that have changed over time, because certainly things do change with work. In fact, this document itself, or this pay plan, is meant to be a living organization, a living document for the organization. So we have built into our process multiple steps for review and audit so that the work and the role and level that's assigned is based on the essential functions of the job, the knowledge, skills, and abilities that are necessary to perform the work. It's not based on how well someone performs their job, it's based on what it is that they're doing. And in order to be in, for example, an A3 job, Associate 3, versus an A4 position, there needs to be significant differences between the work. So we have supporting this, what we refer to as role and level guides, that help to ensure that we're not comparing jobs against each other or people against each other. We're comparing work against a standard benchmark, and it's a completely new system. It's certainly less complicated or has fewer pay grades than the current approach, which means that in order to move from one grade to a level to another, there needs to be a significant change in the work to warrant that sort of movement. Does that address your question?
It does. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Katie, and I'd just like to add that there will also be built-in checks and balances, right? So HR working in conjunction with hiring managers, departments, to ensure that we're doing the right thing, that we're honoring our commitment to a job and pay framework that encourages and maintains equity.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilman, followed by Mayor Protem Nguyen.
And I appreciate that. I had the opportunity in the finance committee to also have some of this conversation, but I, I just, I want to acknowledge that in the last census, women were still earning 78 cents on the dollar to men, and that as the census broke it down geographically, the Seattle metro area is the least gender equitable compensation in the country. Thank you, tech bros. So my, my question, I guess, is, so I guess I'm kind of in trust-but-verify mode, right? That, that we, I'm very hopeful that these practices we're putting in place and this framework will help to ensure and will increase equity across positions as, as people move forward. One particular issue that came up when we created a women's committee to begin to look at equity was about promotion opportunity, and I know the city of Seattle has just begun to look at two things. One is promotions, equity within promotions, and then the other is the amount of the pay increase that comes with a promotion with, as an equity screen. And I would be glad for us to both continue efforts to have people who are, what's the new term, strategically disadvantaged? People who've been historically excluded from these kinds of opportunities that, you know, whatever we're doing to facilitate those opportunities, but also having some sort of tracking or monitoring to see who we're promoting and what kind of a increase in pay they're getting as they're promoted. So I would appreciate us continuing this work.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Gilman. Strategically marginalized is another way to say that, too. Yep. Any, Mayor Protem Nguyen?
I will add some. Left out, less money, not fair. You know, fill in the blank. Absolutely, yeah. By design, Councilmember Cooper says. But yeah, so I just, I won't say too much. I really want to lift up Councilmember Gilman's comments here. So we're at a place of, I think, I don't know if celebration is really the right way, but it's, this is a culmination of so much work, right? And so really wanting to give that work some, some necessary shine and have sort of a sense of pride of doing that work, even though it's the right thing to do. And then also is absolutely, like, it doesn't stop here, right? And so, so I just, I'm so glad for the trust-and-verify mode. In my experience, Councilmember Gilman always verifies things, so I really, I really appreciate that. So yeah, so it's a sort of a moment of feeling good and also knowing that there's a reason that we did this and as a council wanted to, for the city to take this on. And so it's a good moment and also making sure that we hold ourselves honest, that we hold ourselves accountable. Thank you so much for you both and, and your respective teams for all of the hands that touched this. This is big, big stuff. Yeah, I actually, speaking of Councilmember Gilman, I had taken a walk with him, probably my first year on council, and, and we were talking about this very thing and wondered if, you know, it could ever happen, and, and it's happening right now. So that's more than cool. Thank you so much for all of your work, and we'll keep going.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne, and echo the thanks, Manny, like I did at the, at the finance committee. One, one additional question, though, that I came up with is, how does this new protocol apply to the court under an independent-appointed official?
So those wages, and I maybe turn to Mark Barber in terms of specific court rules, but in terms of the pay practices, excuse me, this will, these folks will also be included, right? So this job and pay framework will also guide decisions related to that. In terms of the administration of the court system, I'll leave that to Mark or others to.
But procedurally, they, they use our scale and compensation system.
Correct. Yep, absolutely. They're our employees, correct.
Okay, great, yes, okay. Because I was curious if that wasn't the case, if there was an opportunity to put some of this system in the municipal code to make sure it is, but if you believe that's the practice, then I appreciate the answer.
Yep, they're city employees, so.
City Manager Bernie.
I just wanted to provide further clarification on the answer. Yes, they have to be paid. The judge cannot make her own decisions on pay, so they're city employees and get paid for this classification, so I just want to be clear on that. And the other comment I wanted to make is, a lot of thank yous been going out, and I really want to thank Manny for his leadership here and helping us work through this, because the other thing that's happening behind the scenes is, is Manny is working with his team to create policies that match up with this, that are coming before the executive team so that we have consistency. So if there's one thing for, for HRCC to give a structure, it's another thing for us to change our practices and our policies to match that structure, and that's the work that Manny and his team are doing. And so you're not seeing all of that, but we're seeing it as an executive team, and I just want to give my thanks to Manny, because as Manny has come in, he's hit the ground running, he's brought a change in focus in terms of how we get to pay equity, he's brought a change in focus in terms of how we compensate and how we do things and how we make decisions. So he's tightening up where there's decisions, and he's even tightening up my decision-making at my request, so I get more info. So I get more information than I ever had before, before I make a decision. And if I make a decision and Manny thinks I made a wrong one, he comes and talks to me and says, hey, I know, I saw your email on this one. Can I give you an alternative to consider? And I've changed my mind because of those conversations. So I just want to thank Manny because this doesn't work if we don't have the policies, and it doesn't work if the HR director doesn't feel confident that he can come to the city manager and say, hey, if I were you, I'd make a different decision and influence me in that way. So Manny, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Bernie.
Yes, thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Okay, I do have one. So last time this was, that we did this, I guess it was 2018, you said? So are we anticipating sort of what the rotation will be for sort of monitoring this sort of thing? Or is it a certain amount of time? What are we, what's the, what's looking forward look like?
Some of those details have not been entirely sorted out. But my thought is, is that we'll monitor in real time at hire, right? So at wage placement. We'll monitor on a yearly basis. We'll monitor any time that there is a promotional opportunity that may impact what you've seen here today, as well as every couple of years, complete salary survey.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you, Katie, for sticking with us and for all of your work as well. We very much appreciate you and your collaboration with the city. And as you all, as you've heard already, we're, we extend our gratitude for you for this huge labor of work that you've done on our behalf. So thank you both.
It's a pleasure.
Yes. And, you know, I just want to say to the community that, you know, obviously, we're in tough budget times. And I believe you touched on it in your presentation of the importance of maintaining our talent and the folks that we have employed here at the city of Olympia and remaining competitive with other jurisdictions within the state. And so it's important that we value our employees here at the city and that we demonstrate that through compensating them fairly and appropriately. And so that's why we're having this conversation at the same time that we're having a discussion about where we are with the budget. And so it's important that I just hold that up as we close out tonight on this item. So thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
All right, so at this time, I am going to call a recess for 10 minutes, and we will reconvene at 8:22. All right, so we will move to our next agenda item this evening, item 6B, which is a review and approve, review and approve the draft of the 2025 legislative agenda. And here to present this evening is Susan Grisham, our legislative liaison. Susan?
Good evening, councilmembers. For the record, I am Susan Grisham, and I'm here right now as your legislative liaison. I've taken my youth council hat off. And so tonight, I'm here to present the preliminary 2025 legislative agenda to ensure we're fully capturing council's priorities for the upcoming session. Earlier this year, you shared with me items that you wanted to see on the 2025 legislative agenda. Much of what you actually shared have been ongoing priorities and have remained on the agenda. So tonight, I'll primarily highlight the updates and changes that have been made. So first, I will begin with the front side of the agenda. And so top, first thing, we have the Teshu Teshuray restoration. And that is a new item on this. And the language has been updated slightly from the original version that was in the packet. I handed out a fresh copy to you all. And that's support for $26 million in state funding for Teshu Teshuray restoration project to achieve 100% project design and begin transition into construction in 2027. This will restore 260 acres of historic estuarine. I've been practicing that one, estuarine, and salt marsh habitat across two miles in South Puget Sound. And then beneath that, we have tax reform, which has been on our agenda for quite a few years now. Been working towards revising that arbitrary property tax cap and addressing the regressive revenue options in Washington State. Then moving on to housing and, housing and livability. The one thing that I added under this, in anticipation of council considering a resolution regarding reparations, I've added language that addresses the request for a state commission to study reparations for the descendants of enslaved African people and implement the findings of such a study in order to increase the upward economic mobility and reduce the racial wealth gap for African-American residents in Washington State and Olympia. And much like years past, we're continuing to request for support for existing and expanding permanent supportive housing sites and ongoing support for the state rights-of-way initiatives. So we're moving on to the second side, where housing continues. And we're still continuing to ask for resources to support affordable housing in our community. And moving on to, I feel like I'm a slide behind every time. My apologies to climate. These are similar to what were on the agenda last year, but the language was tweaked a little bit by our Dr. Braff, our climate director. And then moving on to public health and safety, this item two is relatively unchanged from last year. Still asking for support to help local governments continue to meet the increasing public safety demands and directing funding to offset city costs for implementing new laws and staffing, law enforcement-assisted diversion, co-responder teams, therapeutic courts, and other diversion programs. And so with that, I would love to receive your questions, input. And there are a couple of options here. One is you can approve it as amended that I handed you tonight. You can give me some amendments and approve it this evening. Or you could request the agenda to be brought back for consideration at another meeting with substantial amendments. So with that, I leave it to you.
Thank you so much, Susan. And all right, so I'll open it up for discussion. Any comments from council? Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I can kick us off. You know, as I look through this, and, you know, as we go through each legislative session, I'm like, what is our strategy? Like, how are we getting the biggest bang for our buck in terms of what we are advocating for at the legislature? And one of the things that I get concerned about is like when we start bringing in a real long list of things for legislators to look at, it kind of gets lost in the sauce. You know what I mean? And so I wonder about, you know, what our strategy is. Like, what, if we were to pick like three to five, like, very specific, high-level priorities, what would they be, you know, both policy and funding side? And then also maybe having a short list of things that, you know, we want to stay engaged on, we want to track it, we want to be signing in pro or testifying. But it might not be like the main course for us because we want to focus our efforts. When I look through this, there's some things on here that I think are, you know, a little bit vague. And so, you know, so, you know, part of strategy is like, you know, is there a bill that is already written that's going to have a sponsor? Are we trying to put forward our own idea for a bill? And have we garnered a sponsor for that? And if we haven't at this point, you know, it's not too late, but it's getting there. And so, you know, in terms of what we prioritize, like, what is actually ready to be introduced into session in 2025? What is urgent? What are things that are going to stop us in our tracks as a city if they don't happen? And looking at a few things on here that I would personally prioritize, and I'm curious to hear from like the rest of the council, Teshu Teshuray, obviously. Love seeing that right at the top. I think about some of the things around what we need around housing. And so the ongoing funding for the Right-Away Initiative. If that funding does not come through, we are looking at closing our tiny home villages. We are looking at some long-term operating costs for permanent supportive housing that will no longer be available. And so we're, we don't want to be set up by the states for hosting these services and then have them abandon us. I think about the Housing Trust Fund and the ongoing funding needed to construct affordable housing. And then I also flagged rent stabilization, which is now, it's on the back of our two-pager here. That's something that I think should be, it has been a priority this council, longer than I've been on the council. And we've gone as far as we can go as a city with that. And I think there's actually a lot of potential for that one to move forward this year. So those are just a few that I noted going through here. Oh, sorry, I should have, also the property tax cap, also. I mean, that was, got to note it just because it was such an obvious one to me. But, you know, all of that said, I wonder how we can kind of like flush out a clearer strategy in terms of like, what are our top, you know, X amount of priorities that we want our lobbyist like hitting the ground hard on? And what are the other things that we are tracking? We're weighing in on, you know, through signing in pro or con or, you know, or having council members testify. But, but are, you know, kind of a second tier of priority? So I'll just start with that and just see, see what else others are thinking.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Vanderpool.
I generally agree. I mean, this is kind of, you know, the other, the other kind of frustration, but I know we have a new lobbyist, is the more tours earlier with legislatures, the need to bridge the work that we're working on, especially in these priorities, and showing that more earlier to the legislatures as they're creating those bills and working off-session. Because like, you know, to me, it's like, it's the phone's road project. Be like, okay, this is the phone's road project. This is what we can do if we had more complete streets funding. And be like, okay, this is what we're doing. We've done some tours recently, but it's pretty closer, it's much closer to legislative session, but doing it a little earlier, even getting feedback from the session at pretty close to when a session is over. These are all very schedule-oriented things that I think would help. And into the strategy thing, I really do think that having our strategy meeting early with the lobbyist, you know, going in and just sitting down, even if it's just a study session and saying, you know, these are really, you know, because we're gathering a lot of this in here, and I have a lot of thoughts. But I also, I'm not sure if, if some of my own interests make it all the way across the council. And so just trying to figure out that stuff early, because this is, we're getting really close to the session. And so the sooner, the better, right? So, yeah.
Great points so far. Councilmember Partial.
I have two questions. The first is, because you've sent all of us, you and our advocate, in past sessions, when there's a bill that is about to go into hearing. Is it based on this? So in some ways, yes, this is for the legislators, but in some ways, it's also for you. Okay.
Yeah.
The second thing is, I've been talking to folks. And to go to Councilmember Vanderpool, as early as three to four years ago, bills were actually seemingly being developed and dropped during session. And that's why there was quite a few less. Now, the inter-session period is when bills are being drafted. And so by the time you get to the end of December, most of the bills are dropping. And so there's, allows for a lot higher numbers. So I recommended to Susan before council tonight that potentially even LD22 come in early before the session because my assumption is that that representation will know if there's bills out there that fit into any of these categories. And also, that way, it also helps them keep track of the interests. So if we, in say, June, hey, there's a bill coming along that is going to look and we think could get through on the basic income pilot program. So, you know, do you want to send somebody like Susan or our advocate there to be part of the process?
Go ahead, Susan.
So I will say, especially now that we have a new lobbyist, we are strategizing to start this process, make this a year-long process versus being one where it's like, okay, you know, we got to start talking about this, but one that is iterative, that we are constantly in conversation, that we're constantly engaging with our delegation and with other legislators about our priorities. So that really is what I am planning on doing, ongoing. I think now that we have a new lobbyist, someone with a fresh point of view, someone with, who works a little differently, that we can really start thinking about doing year-round work on our legislative agenda. So that is something that I am thinking about, definitely.
Yes, thank you. And we did contribute to this at the mid-year retreat as well.
Can I just, one follow-up? Thank you. I appreciate that. In the past, have we had who is representing us in this paper? Or has it just been you?
It has just been me.
Okay.
But we can definitely add our lobbyist on here as well.
I don't know if that's useful or not. Just throwing that out there.
Councilmember Vanderpool, followed by Councilmember Gilman.
To make, make one little point around this. As I was writing up a list of additional ideas, Councilmember Madron pointed out to me is, what are, you know, are there interests by the legislature to do these things, right? I don't want to create ideas and write them down, and then it turns out there's no interest. And so part of that strategy is matching up, what are the legislature doing in the last session? What are they doing this session? And kind of figuring out where the interests are, right? Where are the trends? So that I'm not just writing down stuff that, you know, are just going to be on a wish list for 10, 20 years. So just kind of to the strategy point.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Thanks for getting this to us. I appreciate it, Susan. And I think, as Councilmember Partially was saying, as an internal document, having this whole list that does reflect our mid-year retreat conversation is really useful. And, and I also hear you saying that as we're beginning work with a new legislative advocate, that we'll think about the strategy. And I, I hope that besides responding to things that align with our values and being willing to testify, that, that we might pursue, you know, choose a couple of money things and one policy thing, right? That, that legislators know that Olympia is advocating for these things. And I, you know, that's, that's difficult to suss out of 30 items. But I, and I, I think it may mean that we'll have, we have to choose whether to spend more council time because this is the, frankly, this is the result of a brainstorm. And part of what Councilmember Vanderpool was saying and asking, could he bring some more items tonight? Was there were some things that were suggested in that brainstorm at the mid-year retreat that didn't make the cut. And it's not clear, because we didn't, we didn't do the winnowing together as a group. So somewhere, it happened that they got winnowed down, and these were the winners. And that's 30 winners instead of three or five winners for the work we take on. So I just, I hope we can continue to refine that process and then just decide how many touches, how much time council might spend. But I'm, I agree with all of the items. I think line up with the work we're trying to accomplish as a city and with our principles and values. So I think it's a good list, but it's a daunting list, a lot of work.
Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I agree. It's a great list. And actually, you know, I was in conversation with somebody up in Seattle who's working on an extended producer responsibility bill called the RAP Act. And I want to see something like that on our list, which is right here. So that, I was chatting with Gary during the break, you know, so that, you know, they know that they can go get engaged in that bill and make sure that Olympia's needs are met in that bill, and then ultimately go support it if our needs are met. So we do need this list of things that are blessed by the council in terms of what we want staff to be working on. And I'm wondering what our next step is at this point? Because we have this list that is like all the things we would like, you know, to have our eyes on during legislative session. But like, how, what's the next step for us? Like, do we want to try to narrow something down that could be on something that is on the desk of legislators? That is our top, you know, however many priorities? So I guess that's a question for us. Because I kind of see this as more of an internal list that is flagged, you know, the many, the many areas we'd like to be engaged. So that's a, that's a question for us rather than Susan.
Okay. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I appreciate.
I appreciate the conversation. I don't disagree with a lot of what's been said, but I view it, I think, a little bit differently at the moment, in that it's similar to, for me, our, you know, our work plan discussion, which is a narrower slice of all of the things the city does, or our comp plan implementation pathway, which is a little, you know, we boiled the whole comp plan down into five target areas. And I see this as five really strategic places with kind of the top items in each of those categories that, that we've been talking about all along. And so, I think the internal version of this is like 40 pages or a giant smart sheet tracking 1,000 bills that have to do with everything from bicycle infrastructure to the estuary restoration. And so, so I think, like Gary's going to be tracking 30 that aren't on here, or whatever the solid waste book of business is in the legislature for the year. And I think it's just important for us to, I think, think about that this is just like a very thin slice on the top of the legislative agenda for the city at its broadest way. So, I, I just see it a little bit differently, and I appreciate, I really appreciate hearing or reading Nick and Susan's voice collaborating in some of these, in these senses. It's, it's nice to see how it's evolved, particularly the comments around addressing financial stability based on what is outlined in the Evergreen Basic Income Pilot. And if I were to say something that I would think is a more clear, high priority for the city, but it's embedded in tax reform, is dedicated fire and EMS funding. Like, that's what we need, second to the estuary restoration, in my opinion, but generally, I think it's a pretty good approach.
Councilmember Vanderpool, followed by Councilmember Madron.
So, do we create a priority list for the legislatures that we hand off, but that we have a list of items to look for, for Susan, and to be notified of, that's separate from that, have a smaller list, but then have a larger list of, okay, just if this bill appears, do, you know, here are some opportunities to speak on it. Do we, do we do that? Do we have a much larger list and then a narrowed list? Just an open question for my councilmates.
Mayor Protem is, yeah, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
You said something, it sounded lovely. What is the question?
Do we have a list, a list that we give the legislatures that is narrowed down, that are the biggest priorities, but then we have a second list for Susan, that when those type of bills show up in the legislative session, we can be notified so that we can comment on them, so that we can prioritize them?
Okay, so that's a question for Susan.
So, during session, we, our lobbyist uses this as a framework, as a place to start with, in identifying bills. And when there are bills that are, that relate to our priorities, they let me know, and I put it out to the council for their feedback and to see if anyone wants to testify in many cases. Then also, sort of sub to this too, is that during session, our staff who are experts in all of their areas that they work in, they're also tracking things and flagging, to me, hey, this is a bill we really, you need to pay attention to. And I make sure that it is on our list and is, you know, I cross-reference all of that stuff. I make sure our lobbyist knows that too. And then also during session, I hear, oops, excuse me, I hear from each of you also, things that, that maybe aren't on this list, that are also priorities that you're looking at as individual councilmembers that maybe aren't as a whole. So, we're tracking those things in all different ways, and when there is something that needs to go, come your way, we definitely send it. And then also, I, we have a report that we get weekly from our lobbyist that also flags all of these things that I share with all of you and all of the E-Team. So, we are, we know what we're tracking and looking at, and where those things are in the process, and who has testified, any feedback that we've given. So, we do track that stuff fairly closely, and I share as much as possible with the council as we get it.
Thank you, Susan. Councilmember Gilman. I'm sorry. Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Gilman.
Sorry, Clark. So, I just wanted to kind of follow along on the, the conversation that we've been having on like, you know, what, you know, just to kind of follow the analogy that Councilmember Cooper was using in terms of our work plan. We have the work plan that we work on together as a council. It's a big lengthy document, and it gives guidance to the city staff in terms of what we want them working on throughout the year, right? Behind the scenes, they're doing way more than that. And, and a lot of it ties to the work plan, some of it is ongoing needs of the city, you know, there's some of it's emergent issues. But when we go out and we talk to the public, we're not sharing the big, long, lengthy work plan with them. We are sharing with them a concise document that has like the high-level things that are priorities, you know, that, you know, Jay was just showing a slide in the budget presentation in terms of the five big priorities that came up through the survey that we did at the public. And so, I kind of see us as like, yes, this is a very useful document, but it's not something that is going to help a legislator understand what they, what they specifically need to work on for us to feel happy with them at that session, because it's entirely too much. And so, so this is great for in terms of our internal strategy, in terms of bills we're tracking, and what, what staff know to look out for, what our lobbyist knows to look out for. But when it comes to an external strategy in terms of influencing legislators, I do think we need to narrow this down to something that is a lot more easier to digest. And I, you know, there was something that you said, Susan, that I just want to get a little bit of clarification on. You mentioned something around like, if a bill comes up where one of us has an individual interest, I think we need to be a little bit careful there, because one person doesn't represent like the city as a whole. So, I know you're flagging things for information. I just wanted to note that like, you know, there's still, there needs to be, you know, at least four of us interested in engaging on a bill before we do, so.
Absolutely. I did not mean to imply that it was individuals kind of going on their own. Apologize for that.
Councilmember Gilman.
Thanks. I think we could sit here and we could build quite a complex, multiple FTE legislative tracking and policy advocacy plan, but that's not what the city has capacity to do. So, I, I think it's, it's fine to state our priorities, but I don't think it's, it's true to imagine that we're tracking 30 different policy dreams that we have, and we're ready to put our staff to work, helping to advocate on all these things. And so, that's why I'm interested. If there are, if there's like, you know, red lights or flashing kind of legislation comes up, that's either an opportunity or it's awful, I'm glad for us to weigh in. And if it's one of our, like, continuing the right-of-way funding or getting more resources to the estuary, I think we're right there. The rest of this, I know that we agree about these items and we advocate through different pathways for them, but I just, I just wonder how ambitious and how many, you know, how many 40 hours a week we want Susan to put in during session to, to keep all this moving and coordinated. So, I, that's, that's just something I'm, I'm hearing in the conversation is, is we can shift into thinking about agencies or organizations we work for that have entire policy advocacy staff, and we're not, I don't think we're in that business, but we want to be able to advocate for the interests of Olympia when there's something really clear to advocate for. So, I just want to express that, that, that interest in keeping it manageable for the amount of resource we're putting into this.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman. Councilmember Partially.
Mine's a really fairly simple question, actually. I'm imagining, when do you put this on the desk of a legislator? Is it because an item on this list has risen to their sponsor or cosponsor, you want them to vote away? Or do we take from this, hey, let's send Councilmember Cooper for the Evergreen Basic Income Pilot Program, and we're going to get talking points off it? In other words, when we interact with a legislator, how many times is this whole document handed to them?
So, typically, this document is used when we meet with the delegation in January. So, that's really the, the first time they see it. And for the rest of session, we use it as a guide, you know, a guide for how we interact and do that work. And then, when hearings do come up on topics related to this, you know, for those of you who have been through a session with me, you know, many times, you know, Lisa, a lot of the climate things, my apologies, Councilmember Partially, the hour's getting late, you know, around climate, you know, we know that you're passionate about that, it's something that you have said before that you like to advocate for. So, I will look to you for some of those. You know, everybody sort of has their wheelhouse that we, that we, I look to the council members to testify when the time is right. So, this is really, it goes to our delegation when we have our delegation meeting in January, and that is really the only time we actively use it after that. It's really a guidepost for us.
So, I, recently I asked that is, to go to Councilmember Madron's, I think it's not wrong for the council to come up with, these are the five things that are burning for us this year, and we know potentially could be covered, and that we really want you to focus on, as opposed to changing this beautiful document, which you could hand out if you were to do a letter on the Evergreen Basic Income, say, look, it's on our front page, with whatever letter. So, I, I guess I, what I don't want to do is too much wordsmithing on this, if, if that's how we're using these document.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. And I think just as I'm listening to the conversation, I, I think, and this is the way I've used legislative priorities in a lot of different places, is it is the guardrail. Like many people have said, it's largely internal. When you go and meet with the legislator sponsoring the bill about basic income, you bring the white paper about basic income from the coalition, you don't bring the city agenda to that meeting, you don't bring the city agenda to a testimony. It always becomes a narrower slice. So, I, I guess, if people would like to see it shorter, then I, I guess we need to start voting on what to take off. And if, and if anybody'd like to do that, it's going to be a long night. But this feels like a really good and concise set of guardrails. I, I think, I hear a lot of people trying to play the role of the city lobbyist.
You took the words out of my mouth. Councilmember Madron.
I think everybody has said that we like what's on this list. The question is, where are we focusing our greatest efforts? And in, in the past, when we've had, when we, when we've had this document come out, we would put a few things on the front, and then have a kind of a bulleted list on the back, and we've shifted away from that. So, I'm a little bit offended by the, you know, the, the conversation around like, oh, we need to decide what to take off here. We've all said that we like what's on this list. You know, and, you know, the question that Councilmember Partially asked was actually really helpful. If this gets used once for our delegation, and then it's an internal document with guideposts, then, then that's great, like, you know, but I think that when we do have limited resources, we do need to think about what are the things that are really going to put the city in a lurch if they don't happen, and make sure that those are a very high priority for us.
Thank you. I have some thoughts. I think, you know, I'm hearing both ends of this conversation, and I, I think that this is, this is the city's legislative agenda. And I hear that we're trying to think about being practical, which is like, oh, let's put the things that are actually going to maybe get introduced, or actually move or get done in the legislature. But if we only place items like that on our legislative agenda, then it becomes the state's legislative agenda, it's not ours. And so, it, even if it's something that we are not sure is going to be introduced or even pass, we are leaving out our own values and our own input and allowing the state to drive our legislative agenda. I don't think that's the approach we should be taking. I hear the practicality behind why we, we should strike a balance, right? And we should have, you know, some, some sense of being realistic as you take a look at our legislative agenda, but I don't think that's the only thing we need to consider. And more importantly, I think the legislative agenda should also reflect what our community members have asked us to advocate for, to the, to the legislature. One of those things being rent stabilization, for example, right? They come to us, they ask us, and even though, year after year, it continues to fail, we're not going to remove it simply because the state's not taking it up. And based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like we were kind of slipping into that space, and I would recommend not doing that. I also, I think that more importantly, I think we should have a conversation about what are the items, I think in previous years, we talked about what should be on the front page and what should be on the back. And to be perfectly honest, I don't think that this sheet has anything to do with whether or not a bill is going to pass in the legislature. This is a small list compared to the average of what, 400 bills that gets passed every year at this point? So, I don't see this as overwhelming, in my opinion. I think that we can have a conversation about what is here, what do we think is priority, what do we want to jump out at the reader of the document as soon as they pick it up, and what can go on the back? As we have in the previous years, if we want to have a conversation about process, we can do that. I'm personally not interested in voting on taking anything off right now, but I would like to offer some thoughts on some suggested changes. And I actually have, funny enough, I actually have a couple of things that are not on here that I think are, are important, that they be placed on here. So, under the Schutz Estuary Restoration, if we can tie that to the specific ask from Department of Enterprise Services, so my understanding is that they're going to be requesting $25 million. So, if we can connect that to that, so that people can, as they read it, they see that connection, and it's clear. The same with the revising the property tax cap. If we could tie that to the Association of Washington Cities, that it's on their legislative agenda as well, and that we're aligned with that, I think it's important to, to state that. As for the study of reparations, this is another example of something that honestly, the, on the Hill, they're going back and forth over, should the executive branch do something about this, should the legislature do something about this? And, I mean, it's something that may not get introduced by the legislature, but it doesn't mean that it, that we should remove it, or that we shouldn't have it on our legislative agenda. So, I, I think we also need to align the language with the Commission on African-American Affairs, which is recommended to the governor to have a state-level commission, so striking the word "task force" and replacing it with "commission," I think is important. And then, there's, I don't see anything on here under, related to bicycle and pedestrian transportation infrastructure sidewalks, which is, you know, another significant thing that we've talked about time and time again. And then, I'm also wondering about public health. Under the Public Health section, what work is, is being done around having more beds is what I would like to know. So, we know that St. Pete's is struggling, the ER is overwhelmed. You know, what is the state doing in that space? So, those are just a few initial thoughts that I have. Any additional thoughts, comments? Mayor Protem, wait.
Yeah, I appreciate where this conversation is coming. I, I also do sort of, you know, we don't always need to be in harmony, but I do wonder if we're saying the same things with different words. I would be interested in having a conversation about the priorities, whether that takes place right here. I'm open to... I'm open to it. But it sounds like narrowing that in for folks. And then I just, I so appreciate the additional specificity. I heard that a couple of times. Yeah, and then also the, the alignment of efforts. So yeah, it's just, you know, telling the legislature, hey, you're going to help us and you're going to help a bunch of other people too. We all agree to it, you know, so, so thank you. And it sounds like we're, it seems like we're kind of turning a corner a little bit here.
Any additional questions, comments? Councilmember Madron.
I'll just say that if rent stabilization is an ongoing priority in the city, having it buried in a sentence on the second page does not tell me, or probably our constituents who are asking for this, that this is a very big priority on our legislative agenda.
Yep, agreed. That's why I mentioned it. Any additional questions or comments? All right, so I'll just open it up and ask if, Mayor Protem, did you have a question? I saw your hand. Okay. I'll open it up and just ask, are we, what are we proposing? In what direction are we giving to our legislative liaison tonight? So is that, are we making amendments to the current document? Or are we having substantial modifications and having her bring it back? Or are we approving minor amendments? Councilmember Cooper.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Payne. I think that it was a substantive conversation that I would appreciate Susan taking back and, and just taking the conversation rather than trying to make direct amendments or specific changes to this document, I think. There was some suggestions and some ask for clarity and some asks for, I think maybe priority is what I heard, like what, how, how do you prioritize this many items? It's a struggle. I mean, how would you, you know, put rent control above basic income, right? Like, that's sort of the tit for tat that gets into that front page versus the second page if you're going to have more than one thing on the front page. Which at one point, we had the estuary as our only thing. And at one point, we had the 1% cap as our only thing. At one point, Highway 101 was the front page of this. And that's the thing I want to say out loud is, there's no freeway overpasses on this agenda and I'm kind of proud of that. So that's just my thought.
City Manager Bernie.
I just want to maybe speak for Susan and me right now. So I, I think if, I don't know that I have enough for you to give it back to Susan to say, take into account what you heard tonight and come back to us with a different list of priorities. I think if you want to shorten to a, a list of priorities on the front side, I think having that discussion, so we, we leave here with clear direction of what are those items that are on the front and what are on the back, can help us bring this back to you so it's complete and you don't have to do this again, right? So I just don't want Susan or I to guess what those things are based on this conversation and we have, we have to do this again when we bring it back. So I guess that's what I'm asking. And I just, the comment I wanted to make about front and back is I think what Susan and working with Nick, we're trying to do here, rather than kind of have this front back, we put things into categories similar to how we've done with the comp plan focus areas and tried to put things in focus areas. So things naturally bled over to the back, so we kept them in categories. But we can certainly take things off and move things around and move the list around however you want us to do that work tonight.
Councilmember Partially.
I'm just throwing this idea out and it's okay if I'm, it's kind of not accepted. But is there any way to put, you've got the bolded lines here. You've got the chute estuary, tax reform, housing, community, livability, climate and public health and safety. To list, those are the, the general 60,000-foot priorities for the city. And then, then underneath that, list them. Because if you were looking at this and go, okay, this city is worried about these things, the interested person, if they're working on tax reform, are going to go, which ones? Oh, those are the, the ones they're looking at. And to see if they can get support from the city. I, it's just one way to do it is kind of list the general areas of priority and maybe a statement underneath that, you know, some of these are going to impact budget more than others. And I don't know, just trying to give, give clarity. Because if this is really only going to be used a couple of times, but used more internally or for public to help understand what we're asking for.
Mayor Protemwin.
Yeah, this is not directly reacting to, to what you're saying. But if, for climate, Susan, if the others agree. Susan, could you write, so it just says climate right now, could you say climate change mitigation? I think that would be helpful. I do, if we do end up doing, you know, that sort of priorities, I do worry that under housing and community livability, that study of reparations, I mean, I understand why that would fit in there, but it, I don't think somebody would think to find it in there. And so whatever direction we're going, I think it's important that we sort of pull it out and give it the shine it deserves.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilman.
I'm just going to give one little down in the weeds thing. And that's that one of my favorite bullets under address regressive revenue options. I just need some wordsmithing. I think it was two attempts that were blurred together. So it, where it starts over again with a capital M in the middle of the sentence of making the Washington State Code more fair. So just, just a little massage there so we make sure that we know what we're talking about.
Thank you. So I'm wondering about each of these five categories that are on this agenda. And if they were to be, what are the top priorities in each of those five categories? And should that be the front page? And what are the secondary or tier-two things that we are asking for in each of the five categories placed on the back of the document? Any thoughts? Mayor Protemwin.
I think that we grab the things that are systemic. So, so tax reform, right? Seemingly pie in the sky. But also, if we had that, it would help us in all of these other areas for funding. So how do we grab those things that are, are systemic? And maybe that looks like, you know, maybe tax reform doesn't happen next year, right? But so maybe we massage that language into the paragraphs that are under it, Susan, that, that tie it into like, like what we want it for, you know? And so then if the ledge comes, or if our delegation comes back to us and said, we know you wanted this, here are the reasons that you wanted it, we couldn't get that, but here is what we got to address those things. So just trying to be creative here. But as far as prioritization, if we could find what are those big systemic things? Knowing that the list always kind of, through the process, gets cut down. We don't get all the wins that we want.
Okay, so now I hear us all throwing out different ways of approaching this document. And we need to come to some sort of consensus to give Susan clear direction. So City Manager Bernie.
This is an attempt to help. So just thinking about kind of what could be on a front page, right? So the chute estuary, and I, I actually like the tie to DES. So we tie this to us to DES request, so that's clear. AWC does have the 1% cap on their list, so we can tie it to AWC. And maybe we just shorten the language, so there's not, we just need that first paragraph with a tie to AWC. We don't necessarily need all of the verbiage that's there. We may not need to put the aggressive revenue options on the front page, that can be a back page item. Housing, community, livability, I agree. I think we take study of reparations and make it its own thing, its own category, we take it out of there. And then the, the things that I think are the most important, as I heard your conversation, number one is the continued state support of the right-of-way safety, the state initiatives. We, we need that funding, that needs to be on the front page. I also think this, this creation of tools and incentives and revenues to support affordable housing, we had two projects that were, had lots of matching funding that didn't get funded last year because they ran out of money. So I think something around that needs to probably be on the front because we, we have projects at risk if they don't get funded. You have talked about renter tenant protections. It's, it's, it's an active item on your work plan to potentially be on the front. And then if I had one other thing, just under the climate change mitigation, there's a general bullet there at the top about the state legislature prohibiting the extension of new natural gas service and require gas companies to plan for decarbonization, electrification, right? I think you could combine some of those bullets into one thing. I think we get closer. I think the mental health stuff is important, but probably backside. And we can add some language there, Mayor, around mental health beds. And then the public safety items that are there, I think are backside. So if I've generally captured that, I think we can work with that to bring you back an addition that has those items mainly on the front and some other items on the back. Now, if I missed one that's of importance, I was trying to capture that, but I think, I think that's what I'm hearing.
Thank you, Jay. Councilmember Partial.
I like it. I would add under resources that any funding is tailored not to go to all one county, which talking to our, our Thurston County auditor is possible to do, so that you can ask for a percentage set aside for the rest of the state, so that two counties don't suck it all up. Because they actually can do that on bill, on, on funding provisos. So ask for that because otherwise it can be an unintentional oversight that they, oops, you know, we should have put that in.
Councilmember Madron.
I feel like this is a very long walk around the block to get back to the start of the conversation. The only friendly amendment I would make is that, that we specifically call out rent stabilization as the tenant protection that we are asking of the legislature because it's the one that we cannot do.
Yes. Mayor Protem.
I'll just fit this one in here. Yeah, I, I got you. So this doesn't have anything to do with what you're currently talking about. But, but it does for the page and I, and, you know, I, I almost hate to do this, but I do think it's important just for readability. But as much, and there is some in here, but just simply using active voice instead of passive voice, every opportunity you have, I think it will just definitely cut down the word usage. And for all the reasons, but for good readability, thanks.
City Manager Bernie.
I'm just going to look at Susan, but I think, I think I have enough here to help move this on, to bring it back to you maybe on December 10th, or sooner if we get it sooner than that. But I can work with Susan to kind of restructure here, get some priorities up front, kind of front and back. And work on some of the other things you talked about. But I've got a lot of good notes here. If you're comfortable, I think tonight what I'd ask, maybe you don't approve it, and just ask us to rework it and bring it back to you.
Yes, that's helpful. Is there a consensus amongst the council with the city manager just said? Thank you. Susan, make sure you hug your boss. He just helped you a lot.
I know.
City manager, or excuse me, Councilmember Cooper.
Don't do that. Two comments that I think I can just start parking lot. One is, if we're going to do this as a year-round process, it needs to be a retreat agenda item to talk about the process, right? And so that we can, we can do that as a body. And then at some point, I'd like to have an update on how the governing body will be involved in the regional legislative agenda, like we've been asking for, but not tonight.
Great points, thank you. All right. Well, Susan, I believe you have semi-clear direction at this point, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the conversation.
Yes. All right. So that brings us to our final business item for the evening, which is Item 6C, which is proposed 2025 utility rates, general facility charges, impact fees and special dedicated revenues, including Inspire Olympia lodging tax, parking and business improvement area and housing and homelessness response program budgets. And here to kick us off this evening is our Chair of the Finance Committee, Councilmember Partial.
We got this presentation, by the way, thank you all for staying so late at the last Finance Committee meeting. And the, the committee unanimously forwarded this on to the council. And you're going to hear some nuggets, I'm not going to take it away from them, on these different departments doing their part for affordable housing. And I'm very proud of them. I'm also very proud of a couple of them putting in some calculators for minimum wage and how many hours it would take to actually pay for some of these bills. So I'm, I'm just impressed with all these departments and thank you and I appreciate it and I appreciate you guys being here. I'm not going to say anymore.
Thank you. City Manager Bernie.
All right, thank you, Chair, Partially of the Finance Committee. Thank you, Mayor, again, for the record, Jay Bernie, City Manager, you are down the homestretch. So we've got a whole cast of employees here to get you through your next agenda item. I'm going to play master ceremonies to walk you through this. So tonight, you are getting your first review of the 2025 proposed rates and fees and a look at dedicated funds. As the Chair mentioned, these items all went to Finance Committee last week and received unanimous approval from the Finance Committee. We will incorporate any feedback received tonight. And these items will return to you for final approval on November 19th as part of final budget balancing. As you will see later in the presentation, we are still awaiting final recommendations on LTAC and PBIA. And with that, we're going to start with utility rates for tonight. And I'm going to turn it over to Mike Vessi to start, who's going to be followed by Jesse Burnham and Gary Franks.
Thank you, Jay. For the record, Mike Vessi, Drinking Water Utility Director. Good evening, everyone. Like Jay said, here tonight with Jesse Burnham, Water Resources Director, and Gary Franks, Waste Resources Director, to go over your, our 2025 utility rates. I was going to share our timeline on the work we've done. You've, you've mentioned that about the Finance Committee, so this will look familiar. Did want to mention the Utility Advisory Committee that we also presented to. Way more in-depth and nut you'll see today, but you guys have their approval letter, I believe, with you, so. The first slide I'd like to share is just the overall drivers that all of us experienced in one slide here is what this shows. So we all saw increases to salaries and benefits for our utilities. Some uncontrollables, the liability insurance increases and fleet rates, that was a big one, and then city hall rent. So again, this is one slide that all of us could be using, but we're showing it here early, so. The Drinking Water Utility, I'll jump in and just share about that. This is about 35 employees grouped into these different categories. Water quality is our, our testing and our reporting for the state. Cross-connection is like the protection of our water system. And then water conservation. That's about six employees in, in that group. Drinking water operations is a bigger group of about 17 employees. That's a picture of a few of them there doing a repair in the road that they do a lot, unfortunately. Pump stations operations and engineering, those tags are a little bit different color because that, those two groups do drinking water work along with some sewer utility work. So that's shared with, with the Drinking Water Utility and Waste Resources. Again, about 35 employees in total. Here's a look at some of the drivers for just the Drinking Water Utility. Overall, this was about four or five slides. With UAC, we tried to put it together for one for, for you tonight. So overall, city expenses for the Drinking Water Utility, excuse me, the forecast expense for the utilities, 17.6 million in 2025. Revenue at 17.1. That revenue does include the new, some of the new contracts that we're getting signed with a seglier equipment that's being installed at some of our tanks, you guys have heard about that, I think. So we're excited about what more revenue that might bring in, but we don't have all of that. Some of that is included in that, in that amount. Also excited about keeping the transfer from the operating budget into our CFP six-year plan. We wanted to keep that on track, that's important. Our, our infrastructure is getting older. We wanted to stay on track and were able to do that in 2025 with this budget. A .5 FTE being moved into Drinking Water from the Stormwater Utility, that's just where the need's at. Jesse will talk a little bit about that. Jesse will talk a little bit about that later on. There was an additional transfer, a little bit more money put into street operations to help with some of those repairs that they do in the road. We cut the road, the streets shows up afterwards to make the final repair. Those costs are going up, so we increased that amount that we transferred to them this year. And then, which was mentioned before, we've been asked to find a way to help with affordable housing in any way we can. So we've set aside .5% of the Drinking Water funding, which is about $75,000 to help with this. Not exactly sure how all this is gonna work, but we're setting aside some money now. Jesse will also talk about that on the sewer side, so that's pretty exciting. Overall, to get us budget-neutral, a 3.9% rate increase will have to, is what we're asking for tonight. I think that's all for me. Yes, any questions about Drinking Water? Great, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for sticking around all night to give us that presentation. Thank you.
Just one, since Mike pointed out before Jesse gets up here, too. So the Land Use Committee is currently working on an emergency housing affordability ordinance that will make us wait at council before the end of this year. And one of those items in there is around how we help non-proper providers and others in particular get affordable housing built. And a lot of times, what that means is there's, it could be infrastructure. So a good example is you might have a sewer line or a water line that's 500 feet away from a project. They own the site, but $1 million to connect that sewer line could be problematic to their bottom line to make affordable housing work. So the idea here in some of these funds is we set aside some funds within the utilities that can be used as matching funds, as grants. We're still working out those details. But I wanted to highlight here, because that's something new. It's something that went to the UAC that they supported. You haven't seen the full package of that yet, so this is predicated on council continuing to support that work moving forward. If for some reason in December you decide not to do some of these things, we won't move this forward. But we want to get, it's important that we factor it into the rates now, so you have all this as part of your decision-making. So I just wanted to provide clarity on that. Okay?
Good evening. For the record, Jesse Barham, Water Resources Director in Public Works. So Water Resources is five different workgroups representing two different utilities, the Sewer or wastewater utility and storm and surface water. The mission of the whole workgroup is to protect public and environmental health. We've got about 16 FTEs in the Sewer Utility and about 23 currently in storm and surface water across these groups. And like Mike mentioned, pump stations is shared with Drinking Water, and engineering planning does work for all three utilities. I'll start with the wastewater budget here. So our forecast expenses are just over $10 million. Revenue forecast to be 9.6. We also collect and transfer all of lots revenue that's collected from customers within the city of Olympia. That's forecasted to be just over $17 million. A significant driver in the city's portion of this budget is that the city is paying all of those in lieu municipal utility taxes on lots revenue. And as you can see, it's a lot more revenue than we have, so it's a pretty big number for taxes there. It's like Mike mentioned, we're reallocating some existing positions to better support wastewater engineering, a transfer from stormwater to wastewater, the one he mentioned we'll talk about in a second. This is to help the wastewater engineer get some more support, and I think some of you have talked to the wastewater engineer, interacted with him, and he's got a lot on his plate, so we're trying to get him some more help. As Jay and Mike just mentioned, we're including funding for affordable housing infrastructure support in the Sewer Utility. 1% of the rate increase is going towards that. That's around $85,000 of revenue that's gonna be set aside for affordable housing infrastructure support, like sewer main extensions. These revenues have to stay in the utility they're generated in, so if the Sewer Utility rates generate this, it has to be spent on sewer projects. It's about $85,000 is that 1% increase. So in the wastewater utility, we're needing about 5.3% to cover that difference between expenditures and revenue. Onto storm and surface water. We've got a few different budget drivers listed here. We're getting some revenue as transfers for vegetation-related services that we're providing for other parts of the city. That includes noxious weed control and right-of-way maintenance, as well as starting to do some tree work in the right-of-way that are related to operational needs of the utility and health and safety for the public, as well as some permit fees that fund a portion of the stormwater engineering group for plant review. Our expense forecast is around 8.3 million for 2025, and revenues are forecasted to be just under 8 million. We're reallocating some existing positions. We're bringing in a maintenance worker, too, from the Streets Department, along with some additional responsibilities for right-of-way maintenance, all of the roadside mowing that's occurring, and sign clearance for safety is coming into the Stormwater Utility workgroup in Vegetation and Habitat. And then we have one FTE that's being moved to other workgroups, half of an FTE to Drinking Water and half to Wastewater. We have some increased fleet expenses related to the new street sweeper, which I think you're hearing about in a couple weeks. That new street sweeper was grant-funded, but we need to pay the capital cost to replace it when it comes up for replacement, so that's a pretty significant chunk of money, as well as the utilities covering the capital costs and the operation and the maintenance costs on that mowing equipment, taking that off the Streets Department. Instead of paying 80% of the cost of the street sweeping program, the existing one, not the new one, where the utility is covering 100% in 2025. So to cover all this, the rate increase is proposed to be 5.2% to cover that difference. A couple of enhancements in the Stormwater Utility. That street sweeper grant included the equipment itself and operator until the grant expires. That grant's expiring in June 30th of this coming year, so we're proposing to create a permanent position out of that term employee that's been operating it and make that permanent. We need about $50,000 of rates to cover that half of the year for next year, and then that'll be rolled into ongoing rates in the future. And then we're also proposing to reduce two seasonal employees into, convert those into a permanent Maintenance One employee within the Vegetation and Habitat operation to help with some of that tree work, ditch maintenance, and right-of-way vegetation maintenance. So those are the two enhancements. As was mentioned earlier, we, the Utility Advisory Committee, asked for affordability metrics around rates. So I did quite a bit of research and came up with a few, a few things to mention. This does not include garbage and recycling. This just includes the water-related utilities. Couple different ways this is looked at. EPA recommends and has recommended over the years, they just updated that document, that isn't included here, but we're gonna include that in next year. But community financial capacity supports the utilities, so that's like the entire community's financial capacity. Reusing median household income as a metric of that. Olympia-Lacey-Tumwater metropolitan area, for a family of four, HUD's median household income published is $116,000-plus thousand. For each of the wastewater utility and the Drinking Water Utility, EPA says that less than 1% of that median household income annually is low burden on the community. Between 1% and 2% is a reasonable burden, and above 2% is a high burden, as far as the community's capacity to support the utilities. As you can see, for Drinking Water, we're significantly below 1%, which is, I think, a big, it's a huge win there. For the combined Drinking and Sewer, which also includes lots charges, we're just over 1%, where they're saying up to 4% could be reasonable, and under 2% is affordable for both combined. Another way to look at these, as an aside, not the whole community's financial capacity, but low-income households' ability to pay. Couple different ways this is looked at. Hours at minimum wage. If you look at eight hours at the Washington State 2025 proposed minimum wage that goes into effect on January 1 of 1666, to pay the typical Olympia bill, it's just under eight hours. And eight hours is around kind of the metric, eight hours or less would be affordable at minimum wage. A couple other metrics that are shown. 30% of median household income, this is what Housing and Urban Development says, extremely low income, that's their metric. It's pretty equivalent to a full-time year of one full-time minimum wage employee would make a pretty comparable amount, just around that $34,000, so they're pretty equivalent. For that, it would be just under 5% of their annual income. And at the 20th percentile, which is below, for a family of four, that's one wage or earning less than minimum wage or not working full-time, we're looking at just under 7%. And the research I did said between 7% and 10% was kind of an affordable range, so we're in the range there, too. Next, I'll talk about the GFCs, General Facilities Charges, and then lots capacity development charge. So what we're showing here is the history. These are fees that are paid at the time of development. There's a cost, one proportion of that cost is to buy into the existing system that the utility already has, and then an additional component that is to upgrades related to growth. So the combination of those provides these numbers. On the far right, the Financial Study Recommendations. That is, each utility has done financial analyses about what we can justify for those charges at the time of development. Those numbers are on the far right, and the year is in parentheses that that study was done. So in the Drinking Water Utility, you can see we're tracking, we're increasing up to proposing 5287 as the 2025 fee. That's about a 5% increase. In 2022, their financial analysis said they could justify over 5600. We're phasing that in over a series of years to get to that number. And as Mike mentioned, they wanna, that is built into their capital's facility plan, that revenue, to do the improvements over time. Wastewater and stormwater, you can see they're older studies. We're proposing relatively nominal increases in those, and we're gonna redo those financial analyses over the next six months and roll in some new numbers into next year's proposal. Lot is setting, their own CDC, the Lot Board, is setting that capacity development charge. They're proposing a 5% increase, of which 2% is to offset their affordable housing discount. Any affordable housing project that meets the criteria for impact fee waivers, et cetera, is getting a 50% discount on all these city charges. So if you're doing affordable housing project, you're only paying half of these proposed rates. And that's all I had.
Thank you, Jesse.
Questions about that?
Any questions from the day? Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Pan. Not a question, Jesse. I just wanted to lift up the comments from the Finance Committee that we asked to have your team outside of the budget process look to try and bring the lot tax into the daylight. And so that was just something that, in the committee, was, it's not something that's transparent to our community, and we'd like it to be, even if it's still paid by the wastewater utility in the long run.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. For the record, I'm Gary Franks, Waste Resources Director for the Waste Utility here to talk about our operating budget. I think in the act of time, I'll move fairly fast, and if you have questions, feel free to just jump in and ask. But I think really, just quick overall about the utility, 31 employees. We provide recycling, garbage, and organic collection throughout the city for both commercial and residential customers. But the big trend here you're gonna hear tonight, and then you're gonna see related to rates, is the transition of the Clean Team. The Clean Team was previously housed in Public Works General Services, was also funded out of the General Fund. So the budget recommendations that we have for 2025 is that we shift that into the Waste Utility. We feel that there's enough overlap with regard to public health and management of downtown sanitation, but it also comes at a cost. It's expensive, and so we have some rate recommendations related to that, try to keep rates as low as possible. But it also secures some long-term sustainable funding and saves the General Fund some money, too, so. So the Clean Team is the biggest driver of the budget for 2025. It's around $900,000. That's how much a program costs. If we were to just look at the cost across the board and look at rates, it'd be about a 10% rate increase across all of our programs to fund, you know, upwards of a million-dollar program. We aren't recommending that. What we're recommending is a 7.6% rate increase, and that we use some capital funding reduction for Carpenter Road Maintenance Facility to essentially buy down the rate. And then in terms of just other trends within the operating budget, Mike Vesey mentioned salaries and benefits being up and fleet rates. We have a bunch of things that have inflated costs, yet the one I want to point out is the recycle and transload cost. That cost is only $30,000. It doesn't seem like a lot, but the contracts we have for transloading recyclable materials and processing those materials is tied to CPAI contracts. So over the last five years, we've seen that go up. At the same time, our revenue has either been flat or has gone down, and so then the delta becomes bigger. So that's just one thing I want to point out. Also, those contracts we have expire in January, so we're gonna have to start getting ready to work on that. In terms of just the Waste Utility operating budget without the Clean Team, our expenditures are up 4.6%. It's about 15.9 million. Revenue's up about 7%, 15.8, and our revenue to expense minus the Clean Team was about $47,000 in the whole. So almost a balanced budget, just about. Part of the reason for the revenue is that, you know, we had implemented an annexation from 10 years ago this last year, so there's some additional revenue for that. Also, commercial revenue has been up. That could be attributed to several factors, but things like vacant buildings in downtown Olympia, we see new businesses moving in, and so that creates more revenue. And then also just construction market for demolition, small companies that need drop boxes, 10, 23-yard containers and whatnot, so. So with that, when you look at the Waste Utility with the Clean Team, so addition of the Clean Team produces a negative balance of around $900,000, assumes a little bit of revenue from the Stormwater Utility to work and manage some stormwater properties, and then also the budget reduction from the CFP for Carpenter Road. This also includes a reclass of an existing position and adds an FTE within the utility, and then the overall rate is about, is 7.6%. I think what you all want to see, what you're all after, is what does that mean for the bill? What does a residential customer see? So the bi-monthly bill is $14.52, or $7.26 a month. That's the increase. When you look at all the rates, including law, across the board, when you look from June to June, there's a little note on the bottom talks about the CPI. So from June 23 to June 24, CPI was 3.8%. In August, it was 3.1. If you look at kind of where we're at, total increase is 4.72%, and again, total bill of being $14.52. So that's everything I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Gary? Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you for the report, Gary. We had a comment come in after the Finance Committee presentation, asking, how will the Clean Team be funded in the out-years if we're using some of what we're setting aside for facilities work this year to make it balance? Will it take a larger rate increase in out-years? What are you thinking about that?
Well, it was around 10% rate increase across the programs in order to totally fund the program. So it is likely that the following year, we will see some rate increase, but it should not be as sizable as the one we're putting forward now, because this funds a large portion of it. So I don't have that exact number on you, but that's something that I can, we can run through the rate model, work with finance, and get that to you or to council.
Actually, your explanation is fine. I just wanted to hear what the plan was for the next year. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Cooper.
I'd like to just follow up on that, and can you talk to us about the implications for the capital project as you delay the savings?
Yeah, yeah, sure. So the, as it stands now, we have enough money. We're working, we have a contractor out on the site doing demolition remediation, so that's taking down the old firing range building. So that is gonna be completed by the end of this year. So that is happening now. They're inside the building doing that work. I also signed an agreement that allows Mile Sand and Gravel, which is the property to the north, to come onto the property and start removing and exporting material off the site. They're gonna remove about 85,000 yards of material, and they have about 18 months to do that. So they've started, but they're not finished. The timeliness of their work depends and hinges on contracts that they have, and so if they get certain contracts, they might move it faster. So they've got a little bit of time to do that. So at the end of the year, this property will be turnkey-ready and rough-graded, so ready to go and property cleaned up. That has to happen no matter what. Next year, we really want to look at a couple things. One is, we really need to update the construction costs. The construction- The construction cost that we brought to you before to Finance Committee was around forty million. We want to truth that and see is that still, is that still about the same? Another thing we're doing is we're looking at some alternative delivery methods. So how we do the project under, under typical design, construct, bid, award project, or doing an alternative, alternative delivery method is what we're looking at. So we have a project manager and a project engineer. We currently have a consultant now, but that's something we're going to be looking at next year. And so as we get going on that, then that would then work and start with design, doing, beginning design of that, of that property. We did some preliminary design work originally just to see if we could fit on the property. But this would be furthering and moving into the thirty percent design world. But that might be towards the end of the year and, or beginning of the following year. But that, you know, all hinges on timelines and, and of course, money, funding.
Any additional questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. I just want to thank the utility directors for their work on this. There's work here that connects the city's priorities around affordable housing. That's, that's new work. I'm grateful to them for taking that work on, for doing this analysis, for working this through the utility advisory committee. And then I also want to give a personal thanks to Mark Russell. The, the whole concept of the clean team and possibilities there, originating with a conversation that Mark and I had in my office. And it was an idea that Mark brought forward. As we've looked at all of our budget challenges, you know, one of the things that is a great gift to us is the innovative directors that we have and the constant work that they're doing to try to help us solve problems. So I just want to point that one out in particular and just thank Mark for his work there. Okay, I'm going to move us on. I'm going to turn it over to Tim Smith. He's going to start to talk to you about development impact fees. I wanted to point out that we had reps from North Thurston and Olympia School District here to talk about impact fees. But as the hour got later, I think we've lost them. But I think that Tim can articulate and answer the questions around, around those. He's, he's heard that quite a few times. So, Tim, take it away.
All right, good evening. Tim Smith, Interim Director, Committee Plan and Development. You know, during the capital facilities plan presentation, when, when Casey Schaffler started mentioning impact fees, I'm like, oh, they're going to get confused. So the, the, both districts did attend the Finance Committee last, last week. So, and they did answer some questions. I'll do my best tonight. And if there's other questions, we can certainly advance those and get answers to you. So this evening, I'm here to talk about two different types of fees that Committee Plan and Development collects, permit fees and impact fees. And they're entirely two different types of fees. Impact or permit fees are really cost recovery fees. They, they pay for staff time to review permit applications, issue permits, do inspections and get buildings to final occupancy. So basically, it's our permit specialists, our planners, engineering plans examiners and, and building inspection teams in stormwater, following a project basically from conceptual pre-submission conference all the way to vertical construction and completion and occupancy at the end of the process. Impact fees, which I'll talk about next, are really pass-through fees. These are fees that Committee Plan and Development collects for other departments in the city, Public Works and Parks, as well as our, our two school districts, North Thurston and Olympia Schools, for, for use for basically capital projects that are intended to support new development. So this, those two different types we'll be talking about. So first thing I want to talk about are, again, our permit fees. And on the slide here, you can see that we have an overall cost recovery goal of eighty-five percent. That's a goal that was established by the City Council back in two thousand and four when we did a permit cost study. We did a, an updated cost study in twenty fifteen where we revalidated that goal. And then in twenty twenty-one was the latest cost study that we brought forward to the City Council. And cost recovery goal of eighty-five percent simply means that eighty-five percent of staff time, other salaries are covered by permit fees. Across the board, we, we find that according to our twenty twenty-one permit cost recovery, we're at about at seventy-six percent currently. There's some reasons for that, but currently we're at, at that rate. What that study also recommends is that we do annual increases based on labor cost. And so you'll see an increase this year with increases the last couple of years. If you go back before twenty twenty, we rarely did increase permit fees on an annual basis, which is one reason why we kind of dropped off from our eighty-five percent goal a little bit down to seventy-six percent. CPND operates out of the Development Fee Fund. We call it zero zero six. And that's primarily supported by permit fees, but also it has a defined general fund contribution of about two point four million dollars for twenty twenty-five. It's less to help cover the additional expense for, for reviewing permits, but also to cover the staff time for those not dedicated to permit review. For example, our long-range planning staff, they're not covered by permit fees because they don't look at permits. So that's the reason we, we structure it that way. So for this year, we, for twenty twenty-five, we have basically five areas of increases. We have some other minor ones that I won't mention that because they're fairly insignificant, but the, the main ones are listed here. And the first one is we're proposing a four percent increase for all fees to account for labor cost. This is a little bit above the, 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 the cost of leading adjustment we're making, but it's basically a, a buffer to also account for the class and compensation study that we're implementing. So we feel like maintaining a four percent instead of a three point eight or even a three point one, which is kind of the baseline, will maintain that seventy-six percent cost recovery with implementation of the, of the class and comp study. We also propose an increase, I have point two, but it's actually now point one percent increase in our technology fee. This is the fee we collect for all permits that goes towards maintaining our smart gov permit system in terms of maintenance and licensing for that. And so that's why we collect that fee. We also have a fifteen percent increase in our stormwater utility plan review. We have several project types that require extensive review by our stormwater team. We, we found that last year, we needed some additional staff support from the stormwater utility. We came up with a fee and we find that we're falling a little bit short on supporting that position. And so in working with Jesse Barham in the stormwater section, we're proposing a fifteen percent increase. What that means for a large project is that it is an increase of about a two hundred dollars. So if you have a very large subdivision, you currently pay about fifteen hundred dollars for a stormwater review. This increases it to about seventeen hundred dollars total. So it's not a, a huge increase on the scale of a permit. We're also adding addition of a land use waiver fee. A waiver fee, we create a permit type so that applicants that don't want to go through a pre-submission conference have an opportunity to apply for a land use waiver through this process. And land use waivers are typically granted for, for projects where very little ground change is a result of a project. It could be a change of use, such as from going from commercial to residential, that type of thing. And so we, we're creating a fee because there is a staff review time to ensure that all the standards are met where, and that the fee is just, and that the waiver is justified. And so we've attached a fee to that. We're also adding a planning and review fee to our civil engineering permits where we do receive, for projects that receive a land use waiver. So even though we're waiving process, land use process, we're not waiving requirements. And so planning team still needs to look at zoning and, and other development standards during the civil review that they otherwise would have looked at during land use review. And so this helps compensate for their time. So moving on to impact fees, just to summarize, state law authorizes cities to collect impact fees to ensure adequate facilities are available to serve new growth. This is really an outcome of the Growth Management Act back in the early nineteen nineties. Olympia has chosen to collect impact fees since that time and currently collecting impact fees for transportation improvements, parks, and then both school districts that are within the city. Primarily Olympia School District and then a small slice in the northeast of town, which is covered by the North Thurston Schools. We only started collecting for North Thurston recently in twenty twenty-two. And a lot of that was a result of, we started seeing a, a much more multifamily growth up in that section. If you think about Lily Road and Stole Road, Martin Way, in those areas of town, they're starting to see a lot of commercial multifamily development. And so the proposal for North Thurston Schools, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going to jump in ahead here. For transportation, which I'll cover first here, is a three percent increase due to inflation and construction costs, materials and labor costs. And this is less than last year. Last year, there was a ten percent bump. This year is limited to just three percent as proposed by our transportation team. And so what that does is we, we calculate, or they calculate a, a, an impact fee rate per trip. And a, a trip on the system is, is really is a person trip. It's either, so when a new project comes in, it's going to generate trips, either vehicular or pedestrian or bike. And so this accounts for that and they associate a cost per trip. So that's bumping from three thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars to three thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And so when you have, when you work within the transportation system, trips, the assigned trips per land use type. And that's a formula that we use. And so, for example, here you can see that for single family, that's, that's, that generates trips per unit. The current fee is four thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars, and that's going to grow to four thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. Likewise, for multifamily, the same system, it's based upon per unit. So if you have fifty units, it's fifty times that amount. If you go down to, to restaurants and retail, it's not based upon units, it's based upon square footage and the use type. And so, for example, for a restaurant, gross floor area is seventeen dollars and seventy cents. That's supposed to, that's going to increase to eighteen dollars and twenty-three cents. And so this is just an example of some of the land uses. The ordinance that will move forward has it broken out into about twenty-five different land use types and then the, the cost associated, fee associated with each use. We also collect for park impact fees for city parks. This is based upon an impact fee rate study that was completed three years ago, or two years ago, actually. And the rate increased, they recommended a phasing over three years to, to bring the rates up. And this does not include any inflationary increase. Really, that's occurred since twenty twenty-two. It's important to note that fees are on new residential construction only. We, you don't charge park impact fees similar to schools to commercial development. And so you can see here in the chart, land use category, the different types of residential development on the left, and then the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and twenty-five fee, which is, would be implemented starting January first. Now moving to schools, North Thurston School District, they have two categories, a single family and multifamily, based upon their capital facilities plan. The current fees are shown in the, in the second column over and the, the proposed increase, actually a decrease in multifamily from thirty-two ninety-one down to twenty-three fifty-six. And in, in answering questions last week, the representative mentioned that's primarily because they're not finding a lot of families, even multifamily projects like they anticipated. And so most of the growth and demands on school are coming from single family construction instead. And then lastly, we have Olympia School District. And this is, this is a big one because based upon their latest capital facilities plan, they are going to be suspending their impact fee program for twenty twenty-five. And so you can see the current fees for single family, multifamily and downtown multifamily, those will be reduced to zero. The reason for that is they have excess capacity in their schools and the enrollment projections they show don't show a, a demand for new facilities identified in their capital facilities plan. And so that will be reduced to zero in, in twenty twenty-five. And this has significant impacts, positive ones on, on development that's, that's coming online in next year because it's a substantial savings for them. One question that came up, the Finance Committee as well, what if, what if the district finds out mid-year they need to actually start collecting? And the answer was, we can bring forward an ordinance at any time at the district's request to start initiating the impact fee program again. It's important to know that impact fees, you know, you vest at the time of building permit application. And so you wouldn't capture anything in, in the pipeline, but any new projects then would have to pay the new fee if it's reinstated.
Tim?
Yeah.
I believe Councilmember Partially has a question.
I forgot to ask this the other night. It went through my brain and then floated out. The, if they reinstated in twenty twenty-six, by not taking it for a year, is that going to substantially increase impact fees in twenty twenty-six? Because they suspended it for a year, are they going to have to make up any difference?
It, it really has to depend on what needs are identified in our capital facilities plan. You know, right now, they're showing no need. And so there's no, there's nothing in the pipeline for school construction projects. And once those are identified, then they can identify what the fees would need to support that. So without that study, I, I couldn't really venture to say.
Okay.
Councilmember Gilman.
I just wanted to offer my recollection. I was surprised that North Thurston was lowering the multifamily impact fee by a thousand dollars a unit. And I asked if it was to encourage increasing denser development. And they said it, it wasn't, it was simply a calculation based on the number of schoolchildren generated by different units. And they're not seeing apartments generating schoolchildren at the same rate as houses are. So that was, so it was, it was really just, it was calculated and it wasn't a policy decision to try to inspire something. That was what I was wondering.
I will just say one more, you know, we're hearing the student population is actually going up in Olympia School District. So it would be great if we could get a check-in with the superintendent at some point, not too far into our first or second quarter.
If we can do that.
Councilmember Madron, thanks for your patience.
Yeah, actually following up on what Councilmember Gilman just said. I remember when I first came on council and we had our joint meeting with the Olympia School District, I specifically asked about charging impact fees to studio apartments. And they seemed completely baffled that, that they wouldn't do that. So it's interesting to see the, that reduction from North Thurston and something that I think we should certainly keep in mind in the future in terms of making sure they're being fairly charged.
Please continue.
I'm, I'm actually, I'm sorry, I'm finished and I could.
That's it. All right.
I'm there.
Perfect timing. Any additional questions or comments for Tim? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I made the note around check-in with OSD throughout the year, so there won't be any surprises there. So, okay. So next, we have recommendations and updates around Inspire Olympia, LTAC, PBIA and housing homelessness to round it out. Starting with Mike Reed, he's going to cover the first few. And then batting cleanup will be Darian Lightfoot.
So for the record, I'm Mike Reed. I'm the Economic Development Director. I am not Mary Grace Gadoo, our program manager. She, I let her stay home, had a feeling this was going to be a little bit of a longer night. So with that, I think you all know the intent and purpose of the Inspire Grant Program. We did award sixty grants last year. We've now completed our twenty twenty-four annual report. I'll make sure that you all get a copy of that report that highlights all the activities and work that we did there. We are anticipating in twenty twenty-five projected revenue of three point one million. This was approved by the voters in twenty twenty-two. One tenth of one percent of Olympia's sales tax revenues are deposited into the Cultural Access Fund. Funds are then reinvested in the work of local nonprofit cultural and science organizations serving Olympia residents. We've made a commitment to the voters that pass this, that we would break out the, the way that we fund this in the sense that eighty percent of the funds that collected go very specifically to our, to increasing cultural access to these various programs in our community. We do have ten percent that actually goes to the transportation and field trips. And you'll see in a later slide, we actually break that up. We're actually a little bit higher than the minimum ten percent there. And then we have ten percent shall be used for administrative costs. So what we are looking at for next year, I just want to remind, there are two kinds of cultural access grants that we offer. One is a comprehensive grant. That is a two-year, seventy-five thousand dollar per year program, so a hundred and fifty thousand dollar total. Then we also do a thirty thousand dollar impact grant. This upcoming year, we will only do the thirty thousand dollar impact grant. So we've got those cycling, two-year, one-year, two-year, one-year. So we actually carry some dollars over and commit future funds to make it so that that wave isn't doing this, but we're keeping the line sort of straight. So we are anticipating for next year, we'll carry that two-year contract amount of one point two-ish million. We'll issue another million dollars in our thirty thousand dollar impact grants. And you can see our ten percent for our admin. We will be carrying a reserve of one point two million. If we do find ourselves in a position where, let's say, we issue the, the application process for the thirty thousand dollar grants and hey, maybe we want to go over that one million dollars that we've got there. There is a, there is a pretty steady reserve that can help us if we need to do that. These are sort of targets for where they are going to be aiming with the program. That's that. Any questions on cultural access?
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I don't remember if you were here the other night when we had this discussion around parks, cultural event sponsorships.
I was at the study session, correct? Yes.
Yeah, so it came out, the idea of trying to do a side-a-side out of the reserve from Inspire for those cultural events. Have you had a chance to process that?
I think what we, I think it's possible to do that. We actually do have some of those cultural events that are obtaining parks funding using cultural access funding as well. So I do think that there is a conversation that needs to have, be had between the two programs to better synthesize who's supporting what and how that's happening. I, I think that utilizing, we have an interdepartmental team, our arch team. This is a subject that's already been flagged. How do we improve that process to make sure that parks doesn't have a different system to determine who it's funding? Yet we have a very clearly articulated equity-focused application and review process. So I, I, I do think that you called out something very specific there. Those two kinds of funding programs do need to speak to each other and not. Those two kinds of funding programs do need to speak to each other and not create conflict for one another. And so it's been flagged, and we'll, we'll, we'll make attention to that. And then we'll even look at it when we issue in January our $30,000 impact grant program.
Okay. And I, and I could be mistaken, but I think that the discussion was about having something more nimble than this. So like, if we could
Yeah.
make it easier to do event sponsorships than
Sure.
this process. And I also think that the match that's in that makes it inequitable. So you have to revamp the process for events
Sure.
in order to get there.
Okay.
Saying that a lot. Thank you.
Flagged.
Any additional questions on cultural access? Seeing none?
Now I'll pretend to be Amelia Layton. This is our lodging tax. This will actually look very similar, the basics of this presentation you have seen year over year, other than Commissioner Vanderpoel. I don't know if you've had the chance to sort of go into the lodging tax funding yet. But we collect two forms of lodging tax, two separate kinds of 2%. It's a weird situation where 2 and 2 doesn't actually equal 4. It's not a 4% lodging tax, it's two separate 2s, longer than I will go into. That first 2% gets allocated directly to the Washington Center. The second 2% is a competitive process. Councilmember Cooper sits on your Lodging Tax Advisory Committee as one of the review panelists for that program. So our first 2% is a credit against sales tax. We are anticipating it will generate $676,000 this year. What we've always done with the Washington Center is that we, we distribute that in monthly increments to them, with 10% going into reserves, to build back their reserves. They did have to dip into the reserves during COVID. Our second 2%, we've actually launched the application process already. We have 30 applications in. It is our highest volume of applications that we've ever had. For the last five years, every year, we have had more applications than the previous year. So we're getting more attention with this program, we're covering more, more programs with this. So we have 30, we have 30 applications in, we have a funding request of about 1.2 million. I think that's actually our highest funding request that we have seen to date as well. Our anticipated revenues, again, is 670,000, 675,000, so that's new revenue to this program, and we anticipate that we have about 676,000 in reserves as well. Theoretically, you could fund everything and wipe your reserves down to zero. That goes against kind of our practice, the way that we've done this. We do have some procedural protocol for what we like to keep in that balance. So the committee will have some work to do in determining who gets funded. They are meeting next Friday to determine that. So when we come back on your November 20, or no, November 19th meeting, we should have a definitive number being recommended from the Lodging Tax Advisory Council. Any questions?
Seeing none.
Okay. Now I'm me. There we go. So I, I'm covering, actually, temporarily, we are down a staff person to manage the parking business improvement area. So I'm taking that one right now. But as you are aware, it's an improvement district that we have downtown. It was started, I believe, in 2009. It is a self-imposed taxing district downtown. We have about 480 rate payers. The rates are set based on the type of business, where it's physically located, there are three zones, and the number of employees that they have. So their rates will depend, their rates can vary based on location and so on, between $250 and $750 per entity. We collect around $90,000 to $100,000 a year. We do have some that do get submitted for collections for non-payment. So it's a little difficult for some of those being new entrepreneurs. This is not a, it's not a universal, universally loved program at the moment. PBIA Advisory Board has not yet finalized their budget. We are meeting next week. Couple of things that we are exploring right now. So there's two options before the Advisory Committee that they will be evaluating. One is a status quo model. Let's continue to do the rate structure that we have, bring in $90,000, and move forward with what we typically do. They typically spend, I think of it on the next slide, is a typical slate of spending that they they will do. The other option that they will be evaluating is for next year to move to actually a zero-rate number and utilize their reserves. They have about $85,000 in reserves, which can cover their typical expenses. And instead of moving through the rate identification and so on and so forth, and collections, they're contemplating taking next year and actually re-envisioning the program. If you recall, a year ago, there was a conversation about a downtown improvement district, and then before that, we had COVID, and then before that, there was another conversation of downtown improvement district. They're overdue for a conversation about what is the roles, responsibilities, rates, and and function of the program. So they are contemplating potentially asking council to change the rate temporarily for one year to a zero rate while they contemplate how they will operate in the future. So that is happening at their next Advisory Committee meeting. So again, I just mentioned that they have $85,000 that we are anticipating for year-end balance. That would still allow them to do a lot of their typical spending. The largest expense that they have right now is actually for flower baskets, ordering the baskets, and watering them daily for six months is actually their largest expense. That's it? Any questions on PBIA?
It's the worst-case scenario for them using their reserves and not having it.
Well, if they use their reserves, and then they decide that they don't make a change to their rate structure, they would reinstitute the previous rate structure, and they would go back to the model they'd have, and they would have a, they would have a, they would have just less reserves. Right now, they have, I would say, almost a full year of operating expense in reserves feels actually pretty high. We didn't, even during COVID, they didn't dip that low. We still collected, we put a pause on collection during COVID, but we even still did collect during COVID. So there hasn't been a rate change to PBIA in the entirety that it's been in existence. So that 250 to 750 rate that businesses pays, that's been the same number. It's also been flagged for some equity issues on why is this business paying this number and this business paying this number? The way the rate structure looks, looks somewhat arbitrary. And so some examination of what that rate structure is and why it is the way it is is what is being requested.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Partially.
Two things that I've heard also to the grave vine is there's a bit of disappointment about the DID not going through, because the leverage of the amount of money they were going to have is going to be so much higher in the, what they could do. Also, it is a lot of staff-intensive work, because it's not an automatic, somebody, ice cream store opens up next week, they have to go know that that store opened up, go find the assessment. So it's actually quite difficult to do assessments the way the structure is. So it's not equitable that way. Some are paying, some aren't.
That's correct. There is no push-button determination of who the rate payers should be and are, and what their radar, what their rate should be. It is all done through what we call shoe leather. So it's literally walking the streets to determine, has a new business moved in, and when did the last business move out? So not a very functional determination process.
That's really helpful. Mayor Protem, when?
I know it's a long night. I'm, thank you for covering all of that, and I think I'm maybe hearing a little bit of heart for staff here, and not having them, both of them stay later. I'm sure that they would. But I'm really sort of energized by the PBIA deciding to, you know, wanting to kind of deploy their reserves, or dip into their reserves, and then also kind of saying, hey, let's press pause. I mean, they're continuing to meet, and thinking about, let's evaluate this advisory group, and and all of the different things that that means. I think that goes along really well with what we're doing as a city with looking at budget, and also looking at all of the different advisory groups. There's so many of them, just kind of like the rate hasn't changed. There are so many of them, and it is not lost on us how much work that takes by both the community member and staff, right? And then, and then it just kind of keeps trickling. So yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm really energized about this. I think it'll, it's the, starting to head in a good direction, and they've already done really good work. So thanks. And also, thanks for speaking truth to power about, about, hey, you know, this might not be the best.
Yeah.
You know?
We've seen other models, just, we've seen other models that have a higher degree of efficiency. What was contemplated with the DID being assessed by property? You can just pull the property tax roll, and you have very clear answer as to who is where and how much the the rate should be. When you have it assessed by business, it does create some complication. When did they move in? When did they move out? And so on and so forth.
The only other thing I've heard also, just, sorry, I jumped in.
Councilmember Partially.
It's, it's late, I'm sorry, Mayor, is that they, they don't want to lose their voice, policy input on voice. So no matter what goes forward, businesses are very interested in staying there in some manner.
Thank you for asking that question. I would be remiss. The question, that is a good question of, are they strictly a fund advisory committee? Like your lodging tax is a fund advisory committee? So this collects a fund, it analyzes the fund? Or are they a council advisory? Are they giving you input on things? Those are two totally different roles, so there is a need to have some clarification concerning that. So thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Just a comment that I'm also excited by the interest in like rebranding, or revitalizing, or changing, whatever that might be. My vision of that is not free, though, and so I'd ask them to set a rate that would allow for the engagement of the downtown community into that process. So that, like, I would be looking for spend the reserve, and what's the cool, exciting thing that you can do to add value to the downtown while driving this conversation? So it's both and for me, not, don't, don't dial the money off while you're rethinking. Like, keep the revenue coming while you plan, you don't have to stop generating all of it. So maybe there's some sort of a reduction, maybe just to throw out a hybrid option.
Okay.
I like that idea. That's why I asked a question, too, about the reserves. So, but yeah, well-said comments earlier as well, Mayor Protem. I think energized about the change is a good way to put it. Any additional questions or comments for Mike? All right.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
All right. The moment you've all been waiting for. Darian Lightfoot, Director of Housing and Homeless Response. Okay. Here is the team, they're so great, I love them. Homeless Response, Housing, okay, what we do, address urgent need, encampments, and tiny home village management, housing policy, housing development. Okay, so Housing and Homeless Response have a variety of different funds and revenue sources that goes into fund the larger program. Out of the general fund, there's about $450,000 of the general fund, and that's about it for dedicated revenue for Housing and Homeless Response, and that's for staff time exclusively. And I've listed the the folks there that are funded by, out of the general fund for Housing and Homeless Response. Then we have the capital budget, and through the home fund, there was a capital budget and an operating budget, and those were separated out when we had the Olympia-specific home fund. And now the capital-specific budget just kind of hangs out, because that is now all diverted to the county for our countywide home fund. And then the home fund operating funds, that's all where our grant funds hit, so that's where you'll see a large amount of the operating expenses be, be charged to, because all of the right-of-way funding also goes to that home fund operating 142. And then we have CDBG. Okay, so this is something that you all have heard a theme tonight, is about what is going into the home fund and what is it funding? So the home fund operating funds, this is our, this is our levy, 110% the 1% sales tax, about $1.1 million. We have a utility tax set aside, which is about 372, and then the commerce contract. So what you're seeing here is if we get the support from commerce to extend through the end of 2025, that would be a continuation of the contract that we currently have, and that would generate about $3 million. But if we don't get that, then our funding ends in June. So we have a contract with the state that goes through June, and then we hit the cliff if they don't continue funding. And that's, again, a little over $1 million. And so this is just both scenarios of what will happen for our tiny home villages and that continuation. And I do just want to highlight, you'll see here, 4.4 million and 3.2, and that still does not cover our current contracted expenses. So so little of the general fund really goes to Housing and Homeless Response, that's staff time exclusively. Everything else is from the home fund or state funding. And so what that looks like is salaries, benefits, general professional services, I'll go into that line item in a second, and then other one-offs like tipping and porta-potties. And yeah, just our rent for this, for our office spaces, et cetera. So then I want to go over to what is in our general professional services. Quinn Street Village, 1.4 million, Palm Street Village, a million, Franz Anderson, a million. This is what it costs to generate, to operate tiny home villages currently. And then we have our two support, Hope Village and Union Gospel Mission, just for the the lowering contracts will provide lighter support. Last year, we decreased our CYS contract from 200,000 to 100,000 with their proposal to council to phase that contract out, because it was more of a one-off directed contract that it did not go through the typical home fund competitive process. So we've encouraged CYS to compete for the larger home fund of the county, said that so they could manage it over the year to go from their full contract amount down to half. And that is, again, what we're recommending, has been communicated for that contract to end at the end of this year. And so this is what our general professional services look like. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Darian. Councilmember Madron.
It's possible that this is actually a question for Jay. I'm glad we talked about our highest legislative priorities and right away being one of them, because that's what stops us from falling off of a cliff come June. What happens if they don't fund it? And I'm talking about, I mean, we wouldn't abruptly close tiny home villages, so somewhere, that, that, that money's got to come from somewhere to fulfill the contracts that we already have in place at the end of next year, right?
Yeah. From what, and Jake and Shermore, what we've talked about is that we would just work to trickle out that for the end of this year. I mean, we could work to continue the contract that we'll be entering into, but those would then just not be continued in 2026. And Jay, if you want to.
Darian, the one thing, I think we have some money in reserves that offset some of that 1.7 there, so the impact this year won't be quite so dramatic, but it will be as we get into 2026. The other thing I'll say here is, this is also actually a regional housing council conversation, because we're serving through these sites, all of Thurston County, and residents from all communities. And so we hold the contract, so the money's coming through us, but if that money goes away, it begs the question, if if regionally, we want all those sites to remain open long-term, then regionally, we're going to have to talk to our partners about more funding that would have to come from them, too. So there's some work to be done through the RHC, so I think as we get into legislative session, we probably should make sure this is on an RHC radar in in upcoming agendas. I think it is. I think, I think the tech team knows about all of this, but I think some, some initial planning between now and June would be helpful, so.
Yeah. You know, we actually, at the last RHC meeting, talked about our legislative agenda and decided on three high-level priorities, one of those being right-of-way funds, and specifically because of, because of the situation right here. But Jay, did you, did you just say that to cover the contracts through the end of the year, that we would be looking at reserves?
We have, I'm going to look at Darian, I think we have some home fund reserves.
Oh, home fund reserves, not general reserves of the city.
Not for operating. So I'll circle up with Darian when I come back on the 19th, and we'll give you an answer. But I think, as Darian has communicated to me, I don't think the impact is 1.7 this year, but we'll circle up and clarify. think the impact is 1.7 this year, but we'll circle up and clarify all the numbers.
Yeah. And what I'm getting at here is, like, you know, we're working on our overall budget. We're spending some of our reserves to get us through the end of next year.
We are.
But if we get halfway through next year and suddenly we need to use more reserves, then we're in much worse shape for 2026. So, that's what I'm trying to get at there.
100%. Yeah. So, in the worst-case scenario, if we got stuck with the full bill, which we wouldn't, you could, that would deplete most of what's left in your balance above your 10% in the coming year.
Yeah.
So, there would need to be some work with our regional partners before that would happen.
Yeah. Hence, the need to have that as a very, very high legislative priority where we're focusing a lot of our efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Partially, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
I'm just strategically thinking, how many other counties and jurisdictions have gotten the right-of-way money? Is there any way to collaborate with them to put pressure on the legislature and the governor's budget?
There are five counties in Washington State that received encampment resolution program, now ERP dollars. And from what I understand, we're in communication with at least three of them, and it's on all of their legislative priorities. And I've already spoken to Representative Dolio about how it needs to be ours, and so we're working that a bit. And Jay and I have a meeting with Rep. Bateman Friday. So, we'll be talking more about that, too. And a point of clarity that I really just like to point out when we talk about tiny home villages, supporting everyone in the county, sometimes that can raise eyebrows, why is it in Olympia? Because it's state-funded dollars, and we have to use coordinated entry with state-funded dollars. Coordinated entry is a countywide program, enters anyone from the whole county, and then those folks get put into the facilities that are primarily in Olympia. So, citing is the reason why we're supporting everyone from a countywide perspective. Just want to put that plug in.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Rep. Payne. And is the right-of-way, just from my memory, is it operating the shelter in Lacey?
Yes. However, that was a permanent supportive housing type program. So, that has a trajectory to be purchased the days in, has operating funding, and so that's more under capital funding.
It'll convert.
Yes, because it's going to convert to permanent supportive housing, where our tiny home villages don't, aren't doing that. You know, they're the first step in. Well, they're not doing that right now. And so, this is operating dollars that we need to keep them moving. So, they're a little bit different, but yes.
Okay, great. And then just to Councilwoman Madron's point, I think it'd be great to have whatever the Thurston County one pager is and the, you know, the balance of state in that program, just so when we're talking to people. And then I have a connection with Empire Health, if you don't already, and Spokane contractor.
Oh, great. Okay. Great. Yeah, that'd be great.
Any additional questions or comments for Darian? All right, seen none. Thank you very much.
We're done. So, thank you. I know this has been a long night. I think this is, I was telling the mayor earlier today, I think this is your longest night left this year. I think you're down the homestretch on a lot of budget. A lot of your presentations have come tonight. You have another public hearing coming up next week, and then we get to final budget balancing on the 19th. And that'll be our last big night to tie all these pieces together and get final approval. So, we've got a few open things to work on, council support, LTAC, PBIA. We'll circle back with the housing homelessness funding with you, too, and close all those loops. And we'll do that all on the 19th. So, just appreciate the long night, and I just want to give another shout out to the staff. It's been a long evening, and I appreciate them all being here.
Thank you, City Manager Bernie, and thank you all for sticking around. Yeah, we really earned that next week of not having a meeting, the last two weeks, four and a half hours. Okay. So, we will move on to council reports, and I'll just be brief and share my report. So, first of all, I just want to acknowledge that earlier today, the county of Board of Commissioners approved the interlocal agreement for the Deschutes Estuary. So, just want to extend our gratitude to the board, and we're very excited because now all of the partners have agreed to sign the interlocal agreement. So, on the 17th of October, I delivered a state of the city presentation to the West Olympia Business Association, who requested that I meet with them quite a while back, wasn't able to meet with them in September and followed up with them in October, which they were very pleased with because then they got the opportunity to ask me about the Workers' Bill of Rights proposal. So, of course, I answered their questions and of where we are with that. But for the most part, we focused on the state of the city and really the scope of the work plan throughout 2024, which was a great Q and A session with them as well. Followed by that, last week, I think it was, I'm losing my track of dates, had a meeting with Thurston, or excuse me, Timberland Regional Library with the Executive Director Cheryl Haywood, along with the City Manager and Mike Reed on discussions about what to do with our downtown library building and conversations about a future vision for the library, and things are moving along in that regard. So, stay tuned. There is, yesterday, there was a kickoff stakeholder engagement meeting for Rebecca Howard Park, which I was very happy to attend and participate with fellow community members and those who have been engaged in the project for quite some time now. And I feel very hopeful of where we're going in terms of really solidifying feedback for conceptual design of the park. And so, there will be, I think, a more robust community engagement process involved with that. One of the comments that I did make is the importance of making sure that we center Black voices in that conversation and that we allow the Black voices to lead those community engagement efforts. So, while we certainly appreciate everyone's participation and engagement, that is critical to the project and, in fact, defeats the purpose if we do not prioritize that. So, and then lastly, I just want to share that I'll be delivering a keynote address for the Olympia Free Clinic this coming Saturday. So, I'm excited to be invited to do that. And there is also a women's march that will be happening on the Capitol campus this weekend as well, I believe beginning at 10:00 a.m. And that's my report. I'll start to my left. Councilmember Cooper.
Vote, 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 vote. Please make sure to ask everyone you know to turn in their ballot by 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday.
Great reminder. Thank you. Councilmember Partially.
Two votes, vote, vote. One of my reports we just heard for the last few hours, which is Finance Committee, I'm not going to repeat it because essentially that's all we talked about. I am going to talk about Climate, Thurston Climate Collaborative Steering Committee. We had two, I guess, Supporting Partners updates. One was the Thurston Conservation District. It's great. I'm not going to go into detail on that. We also had Thurston County Economic Development Council, and I kind of put this out there. It has officially happened. Thurston County is the fastest-growing per capita county in Washington over King County, Pierce, and Kitsap at 18.6%. But what's interesting, and I put this out there, EDC now has two full-time staff researchers looking into how do you build high-density in terms of developing a regional approach to potentially bringing light rail despite what we've heard, walkable neighborhoods, transit-oriented development, and they want to be part of the whole process. So, I just bring that back, that they have this policy research support. And then, we talked about the Home Energy Score Model Ordinance, which will be coming as a study session to council in January. It is already at each jurisdiction's staff, and I believe soon will be to legal to look through it. Essentially, the pieces of it are, it's going to be mandatory. This is a very involved process. It took a year with a lot of community input, including developers, mortgage companies, real estate agents, and a variety of other climate activist groups. And so, not only is it going to be mandatory at the time of listing, but it is also going to only mainly hit the townhouses and single-family housing units. If this is successful, they can move it out to the higher multifamily units. There will be exemptions to distressed properties. Disclosure is going to be mandatory, but not necessarily enforcement because that's staff time. The next steps right now is they've got one more focus group. They're going to have one more open community review, and then it's going to each jurisdiction in January, February, with the hope of February and March to April that we get the first and second readings of the ordinances. Lastly, we had Energize Thurston, which is an expansion of Energize Olympia, and they had some interesting, very non-scientific data on surveys that at least 46% of our region are very favorable about electrifying. 23% are somewhat, 24% are neutral, and only 7% are against it. Just keep that in mind. Most people are aware of air quality being tied to fossil fuels, and they are, they've put together a pretty robust project that will include Tonino, believe it or not, not just the Lacey Olympia Ton Water in the County. Tonino wanted to throw their money in, and I believe if I've got the numbers correctly, they have about $4 million when we collect all of our energy grants put together for this process. They are hoping to get 600 homes, and I'm looking really quickly to see if I have the number of homes that will be completely subsidized because there's three layers, complete subsidization, 80% subsidized, and then self-funded. Everybody in the self-funded will benefit from the group purchase, and they are getting RFPs out to get the two best installers. And anyone that's in the complete subsidized or partial subsidized will get installation for free. And it's also tied to switches on. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Partially? Seen none. Mayor Protem win.
She said, "That's it." Yeah, I just, I've been doing my council duties. If you have any questions, we can chat about it. I just, I have a question for you all tonight, which is just a kind reminder that as the Chair of CLIPS, I am the liaison to the Police Auditor for the council. It is our, you know, one of the positions, it's our hire for the Police Auditor role. I am in the final stages of reviewing the RFP, working with Assistant City Manager Debbie Sullivan to review the request for proposal for the new Police Auditor role. We're retooling the role, but more on that later. And so, I had come to this group before, asking if anyone had any feedback. So, I guess it's a kind reminder, and also, we're approaching the beginning or the final stages here. So, please reach out if you do have anything. And then also, speaking of which, we would be looking to, of course, we'd have to open the process, and then the first quarter of next year, we would be ideally having a robust candidate pool and deciding who to interview. And that interview, or that interviews for the Police Auditor before has been with the General Government, which is now Community Livability and Public Safety Committee. So, I just want to kind of see if there's consensus for the CLIPS Committee to interview for the Police Auditor role, or if there was some other process we'd like to see. Love to hear your thoughts.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the Mayor Protem? All right. Mayor Protem.
How will you be sharing what you would like to see as a process for CLIPS? There was a question about how you would like the, how you would like the Police Auditor interviews to go. We don't have to decide tonight, but I didn't hear anything, so I just wanted to make clear that that was a question.
Yes, thank you. So, the typical process is that the committee would make a recommendation to the full council, and the council would weigh in with their support or opposition. Mayor Protem, or, excuse me, Councilmember Madron.
For me, it's always helpful that if somebody wants some feedback from me on something, like, not asking at 10:40 at night, but sending out an email to the full council, if you want any feedback in advance, that's what works best for me, or individual conversations. So.
I'd be calling you.
Anyone else? I'm okay with that, with having a one-on-one conversation about it. Okay. All right. Also, we reviewed the Public Safety Chapter for the Comprehensive Plan in CLIPS last week as well, and that'll be coming to the full council soon. So, all right. Councilmember Gilman.
Nothing to report this evening.
So, I have a few items. So, the Transportation Policy Board and the Thurston Regional Planning Council Subcommittee Call for Projects Committee met last Wednesday, and we looked over the scenarios. We're currently working on, mirandum, on funding scenarios, rewarding projects based on their allocated scores, or an alternative where we set aside some funding, additional funding for regional trails plan implementation. And we're leaning towards the second project, the second scenario, where we're putting extra funding behind getting those regional trails plan implementation. Other than that, it's going to go to Transportation Policy Board in November, then TRPC in December. Recently, also went to a TR, our Thurston Regional Planning Council High Capacity Transportation Visioning Event, which was a really awesome event. It had intercity transit, rural transit, Pierce, Sound, and Amtrak Cascades were there, including, but then also planners, like official staff, members, the public at large. It was a very fantastic conversation about, you know, the theme of partnerships between our agencies and finding connections between Pierce and Thurston and the Sound in general. You know, how do we scale our partnerships through more bus routes, through high occupancy vehicle lanes? How do we plan our density along the I-5 corridor? You know, what are the gaps in the networks between these different agencies? And, you know, on the other hand, we also, what items would we want more funding for and support? And so, it was a very, it was a very, I was very hopeful coming out of it as a conversation, a starting point, to continue to have those kind of conversations where if one agency can't do it, the other agency can also help. And so, kind of building that. I look forward to more of that conversation in the future as TRPC, Thurston Regional Planning Council, expands into having more meetings like that. Other than that, I also recently went to a documentary presented by the Thurston Lewis Mason Labor Council, Labor Wars of the Northwest Documentary, over at the Olympia Film Society. It was good to speak with the labor leadership and community members about the work working on council. You know, it was good to also hear that there's this continued push to say, hey, we wanted to work on stuff either through the council or outside of council, but also working with small businesses in the community. There's a very positive look at trying to work together, and I'm hopeful, even if it doesn't make our work plan, we can also work outside of council, and there's this need. But there's also, continue to come back is the idea of having public listening sessions. I know that we don't have the time or capacity tonight to talk about that, but I am open to having that either this year or next year about what can we do to help scope out what the work will look like. So, yeah. That's all I got.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Councilmember Vanderpoel? Mayor Protem win.
Councilmember Vanderpoel, will you just, what was that last topic that I think I had missed? Scoping out the work of what?
The workers' rights.
Oh, I hear you. Thank you.
Oh, I hear you. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Madron.
Land Use and Environment Committee met on October 17th. We only have one item on our agenda. It was the Land Use and Urban Design Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. And we were getting a preliminary look at it. It's still in development, going to go through Planning Commission, Social Justice and Equity Commission and all that. But it took a step in land use first so that we could offer some of our insights into what we'd like to see in that. Regional Housing Council met on the 23rd. One of the big topics that we discussed, we had a really thorough presentation on mold and talked about how we might work as a region in terms of addressing mold in rental units. And it's been a little bit of a struggle figuring out how we work together on policy at the Regional Housing Council. But with this one in particular, there's interest from the County Board of Health in getting involved. And since they specifically have jurisdiction over public health issues, you know, where we kind of left the conversation is like, okay, let's see what happens at the County Board of Health, and then where jurisdictions can support that, because that's where they have jurisdiction. One area where we have had success as a regional body in policy stuff together is developing our legislative agenda. We took a dozen or so ideas of what could be on there. We took especially what was on our legislative agenda from the year before and said, hey, let's choose, you know, three or four high priority things to have a more effective legislative agenda that'll capture more attention. And we had a pretty, you know, collaborative conversation among the five jurisdictions and decided to prioritize right-of-way funding, rent stabilization, funding for the Habitat for Humanity project on Boulevard Road. And then also, we're likely going to add funding for the Housing Trust Fund on that as well. So that's it. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Madron? It's a great list of priorities. Thanks. City Manager Bernie.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report. Just a personal privilege, and during the hustle and bustle of budget season, I moved a piece of my heart across the country. It's a hard, hard time for a parent, but he's going to chase his dreams. And, Cole, I just want you to know that Mom and Dad got you, and we're proud of you.
That's great. All right. Well, I'll just make one last plug to the community to please make your voices heard and by voting in next week's general election, and put your ballot in the box by 8:00 p.m. next Tuesday. So with no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.